All right, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And first, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oops, let's just stay off. Ricocheted my chair.
Oh, fun.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any public comment? There is no public comment. All right, Consent Agenda. Approval of Meeting Minutes from 11:05:25. Request to approve Accounts Payable Warrant 19. Request to approve Payroll Warrant 18. And request to approve Skills, Capital, Technology, and Equipment Grant Award. Anybody?
I don't know if Kelly, if you wanna package these in with the Consent Agenda or if you'd accept that we're referring, but I did throw the meeting minutes together for me to make the budget work and I'll go right from there. The members, you know, to your left a little bit. And the members have it. So, I know it's, it wasn't in the package. We can put it in the agenda, but it's very basic. So, if you wanted to add it to the Consent Agenda, pretty good.
Sure. So, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the addition of the Budget Form Meeting Minutes?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kelly, I just wanted to add, we were supposed to have added the second read to the immunization policy, which will add to the next agenda. And so, that inadvertently left off, so sorry about that.
All right, so that'll be next meeting.
That'll be next meeting.
Just what, is that the budget here?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. All right. Student reps, new business.
Good evening, everybody. At Chandler, we had our second Green Assembly on Friday. We focus on our definition of showing respect, which is showing that something or someone is cared for and important. We encourage students to show respect to people, places, and things. As a follow-up, all teachers will be conducting grade-level lessons directly tied to this area. We have also shared the respect definition of cared for and important with families in order to help reinforce this idea at home. We have once again started a great partnership with Ducksbury High School for the Power Pals Program. DHS students applied to be a high school hero and were then matched up, and were then matched up with a Chandler sidekick. DHS heroes will travel, travel to Chandler every other week and get to spend time with their Chandler sidekick. We are looking forward to helping both groups of students to build meaningful connections with each other. Next week, on Wednesday, November 26th, Chandler will be having our annual Turkey Trot during the school day. The funds raised with the PTA fundraiser will be used to directly support students through the enrichment activities, field trips, and more. We are grateful to the Chandler PTA and Chandler friends and family for this amazing support. At Alden, the Alden Kids Care Club held an engaging meeting focused on food insecurity, what is, what it is and how our community can help. Students worked in teams during, through budget scenarios to explore how monthly budget works and discuss the importance of nutritious meals and the challenge many people may face in the accessing them. We were joined by Matthew Martin from the End Hunger New England in Pembroke, who shared the organization's mission and impact. As a next step, the Kids Care Club will send volunteers on December 5th to support End Hunger's work. Together, our students along with the organization will help pack more than 20,000 nutrition meals for women, children, and men across Massachusetts. This is a wonderful example of our students taking meaningful, meaningful action and making a difference. Thank you to Jen Chase and the PTA for their support with this impactful opportunity for our students. On Friday, November 14th, Alden students and staff wore blue in recognition of World Diabetes Day. Additionally, one of our students delivered a presentation to their team, helping peers learn about the difference between type 1 and type 2 diabetes.
Hello, everyone. At the middle school, we had another successful year of conferences last week with 824 total conference appointments across the afternoon and evening on Thursday. On team, teachers had a 92% fill rate, and these were important opportunities for our families and teachers to discuss student progress. Our Student Council students created a wonderful recognitions of our DMS veterans in Main Street and read the names of DMS family members who have served at our term assemblies this month as well. They are organizing a spirit day next week where all students are invited to wear their Ducksbury colors for Early Release Day. We want to wish all of our DMS folk a happy Thanksgiving break next week and invite attendance at our winter holiday concert series, which will begin the first week of December with 7th and 8th grade chorus and orchestra on December 2nd and 6th grade assemblies on December 4th and 7th and 8th grade bands on December 9th. At the high school, we want to congratulate all of our senior student athletes are, who committed to continuing their academic and athletic journeys at Division 1 and Division 2 colleges and universities next year. Congratulations to Abby Redman, Liza Thorne, Addie Bajornas, Lauren Setliff, Willie Fisher, Eddie Murphy, and Brady Reinsmith. The fall athletics are continuing to make good runs in the playoffs. Best of luck to our girls and boys varsity soccer teams who will face off in the D2 state finals this Saturday in Lemon Sur. The girls will play at 2:30 and the boys will play at 4:45. Make the trip to cheer on both teams. Friday night, the boys' football team will be taking on Situate in the semifinals this Friday at Hingham High School. Congratulations to our fall cheerleading squad who captured the title of D2 sectional championship champions this past weekend. Next up, they will compete this Saturday in the state finals at Worcester State. Best of luck to all teams. A big congrats to the following students for winning this year's DHS Music Department concierto competition. Clara Gadir, Delaney McIsaac, Anya Shabor, and Jackson Taylor. DHS and DMS are partnering, are partnering in hosting the annual food drive. If you have any questions, please reach out to Mrs. Maddet, Ms. Barnett, or Ms. Sheehan with any questions. DHS's Student Council is hosting a diaper and wipe drive to help support its charity of the year, which is the Carolina Hill Shelter in Marshfield. If you have any questions, please reach out to the Student Council Advisors or the Charity of the Year Coordinator.
Thank you. And congratulations to you for your senior track season.
Thank you.
Yeah? All right. Next up is Mass Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence Award. And we'd like to call up Mackenzie Kingston. Mackenzie. I don't know if you wanted to say it or me.
Yep. That's great. So, we have asked Mackenzie Kingston to be here this evening. Just a little background, each year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents asks superintendents to select a student to receive their annual award. And I've typically been doing this during senior awards night, and I'm supposed to be doing it earlier in the school year when our seniors are applying to colleges so that they can add this to their list of honors when they are completing their applications. So, I'm doing this right for the first time this year. So, last Friday, I was able to tell Mackenzie that she was my selection for the superintendent's award for 25, 26 school years. So, we're gonna embarrass Mackenzie for just a few minutes, and Mackenzie's mom is here too, so that you can hear about this amazing student. Mackenzie Kingston is an exceptional Ducksbury High School scholar, leader, whose strong work ethic, intellectual curiosity, and deep commitment to others define her impact on the Ducksbury school community. A top academic performer across all subject areas, she excels in advanced math, science, French, and orchestra. Driven by a genuine love of learning and a remarkable ability to balance a challenging course load with leadership in all areas in which she participates. You should see her schedule this year of senior year, it's not easy. She is known by her peers and alike as collaborative, thoughtful, and dependable. Mackenzie is often the first person others turn to for academic support or personal encouragement. Her strengths in problem-solving, communication, and emotional awareness make her a trusted leader across classrooms, teams, and clubs. A well-rounded student, Mackenzie has served as class presidents, every, class president every year since 9th grade. That's pretty incredible. And contributes meaningfully to numerous organizations, including Student Council E-Board, the Superintendent's Advisory Council, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Student Advisory Council, National Honor Society, French Honor Society Prom Committee, and the Orchestra, where she has taught younger cello students. She is co-founder and co-president of the DHS French Club and has taken on leadership roles in freshman orientation, school-wide initiatives, and community service. An accomplished athlete, she is captain of varsity lacrosse and varsity indoor track and a member of the varsity soccer senior leader team, who will be playing in the girls' state soccer final game for the second year in a row this Saturday. She also gives back through coaching youth soccer and lacrosse and tutoring in academics and cello. Guided by a passion for service and global health, Mackenzie has completed medical coursework at Bridgewater State University and participated in physician and EMT shadowing experiences. She plans to pursue pre-med studies alongside continued French language and cultural, cultural work inspired by the intersection of medicine, equity, and global need. Mackenzie embodies the qualities of a scholar, leader, and citizen, and she is richly deserving of the 2025 Superintendent's Award for Ducksbury Public Schools. So...
Thank you so much. I feel honored to hear this.
So, we're proud to, we don't get to do really happy things like this at all of our meetings. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Yep, we're really proud of you, and thank you for your contributions to DHS and all through your schooling years. So, thanks, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mackenzie.
Congratulations.
Have a good night, everyone.
I just wished that you were a little more driven.
She's pretty driven.
Thank you.
You gotta have a Mackenzie at the school.
Yep.
All right, I'll stop smiling. All right, Liaison and Subcommittee Updates. I know Kathy can't be here, and she had emailed me that her school council is tomorrow. I think she's middle school. And same for me, high school council is tomorrow.
I have a PAC update, which I'm, I'm really grateful, they actually, so, so they get rated, the Plymouth area collaborative. Right. And one of the findings was that, one of the things that they look at is whether their liaisons discuss what happens at their meetings, at their school committee meetings. And apparently, that's like one of the only areas where they didn't receive high marks. So, their solution to that was to help us as liaisons and do a little bit of a summary at the end of each meeting, because I think people forget, and there's time between those meetings. So, that is the new strategy to make sure that I have the information to share with you. And this is, this is a big one because it's mostly finance-related. I'm sure Lisa already knows about this. But they just completed their FY '25 audit. It was a clean audit, no findings, which is always great news. That will all be posted publicly once and then sent to the state auditor's office by the end of year. They amended the annual budget. They amended the annual budget slightly, which is common practice. Every fall after the preliminary budget was approved, obviously, there's some changes that are happening in staffing and things, so those are amended, and we approved the amended budget as the justification was obvious and reasonable. There is often a cumulative surplus, which is something, obviously, we talk about here. This is where they... We decided, they made a recommendation. We accepted the recommendation. Not only do they return monies to each district distributed based on the number of students who are part of the collaborative, so for us, that was $8,042 that we should have back. And then they are working on a project, so we also allocated 100... I think there's an extra zero in this number. I think it was $16,000 to transfer to their building facilities fund, because they are working to build a new playground at the collaborative. So we all supported, or at Pilgrim Academy, actually, which is a part of it. And then they are doing a policy review of all policies. They have less than we do, which is great. So we did a first read on a subset of them, and we're just going to kind of move through them for the next two years. So that's it. That's from the PAC.
Excellent.
And Lisa, what does that just go back into the tuition? I mean, it's tuition that was paid that is not utilized.
To the tuition account and then essentially offset other things that we need to cover.
Yeah, okay.
Can I get a quick update?
Yes.
I don't have anything for the DEI committee or CPAC, but several of us went last week, at the end of the week, to the Mass... Yeah, it was last week. It feels like forever ago. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Superintendents Annual Conference. So I was there both days. Laurel came, Kathy came. I saw Danielle there. Beth, you weren't there, right? And then on one day, I presented with a school committee member from Pembroke and then two folks from the data science team, Desi, on using data for decision-making. So it went really well, and I think several of the other folks are... From the panel we discussed after potentially doing, and you mentioned potentially bringing the presentation to school committees and like having it with us, and then a couple other ones on the South Shore.
Nice. Excellent.
Cool. I have two updates. One is from the Alden School Council meeting from earlier this week. They covered a lot of stuff, but three things sort of bubbled to the surface. One is they gave an update on the feasibility study for the Alden building, which of course is very relevant to that school's school council. The first, I wouldn't even call it the first draft, but a very early preliminary draft of the handbook was distributed just because, you know, spring seems to come before you know it. So they wanted to make sure that all of the school council members were able to have enough time to review the handbook and be able to submit feedback if they wanted to. And then they also had a summary of the CKLA curriculum, which was really, really positive. According to the faculty, the kids are engaged. They're using the language at home. Parents have commented that the kids are excited and discussing what they're learning at home, and the teachers enjoy teaching it. So I thought that was all worth noting. The second update I have is the legislative liaison update. So I was able to catch the Select Board meeting this past Monday. And I wanted to just point to the proposal to move the annual town meeting to May, because that was discussed at the meeting. The board voted to suspend the article, and that means that the meeting will remain in March for the foreseeable future. But I wanted to bring a specific aspect of the discussion to the committee's attention, because it does rest on a misunderstanding of the school committee's authority. The primary reason given for stopping the initiative was a report from the town clerk that the Performing Arts Center is fully booked in May and that there's not one day available. But there's some critical context that was missing from that discussion. If this article had passed, the change would likely not have taken effect until May 2027. So it would be on the ballot for 2026. The first ATM to move would be 2027. So while our current May calendar may be busy, the school calendar for May 2027, I don't believe exists. And if it does, it's probably not for every day. The town, in my view, treated the school calendar as an immovable roadblock, but in reality, the school calendar is a policy decision that's under the purview of this committee. We decide what, you know, what the schedule looks like in May. So if the town believes that moving the meeting to May is fiscally responsible, this committee has the authority to prioritize that date in future calendars. We could, as a matter of policy, reserve the first Saturday or a specific Tuesday in May for town government before scheduling concerts or other events, and we can move concerts and other events. So in conclusion, it appears that this initiative stalled because the town looked at its current operational habits rather than asking the school committee about future strategic possibilities. I would recommend that we communicate to the Select Board and the town manager that should they wish to revisit this in the future, the school committee is willing to discuss reserving the facility in future years to support the town's budget process. So that's it.
That's a lot. Wow. News to me. Okay. Food services update. Kelly Prince.
Thanks, everyone. Hello. Just a quick update. Nothing that you probably haven't seen before, but I have a copy here just because I'm blind in my age as I... Okay, so just a quick update. What we're up to. We're well underway in the school year. Can't believe Thanksgiving is next week already, but just some reminders for the community. I have an Instagram page that I try to post to, and every day I have new followers, and that's very exciting. What we've done through... We've walked through... I've had kitchen walkthroughs at all the open houses so that we can meet parents if they have questions. It's always... We had some samples, and it was fun to meet the parents. We will continue with our both high school and middle school advisory council. Last year, we had mostly seniors, so we're in the process of identifying students for this year, and we will get that underway after the break. We have been continuing our engagement events at all the schools with all of our programs, Discovery Kitchen, Mood Boost programs, Student Choice programs, and we have a Global Eats program. Just all these programs just bring about ways that we can bring some new taste testing to the students, get their feedback in real time, and it's just, quite frankly, a lot of fun. We are going to do surveys, and truth be told, I have the survey ready to go. It was going to go out last week, and then I saw that the students at the high school had another survey, so I thought maybe we shouldn't do that. It's a little survey overload. So I will do that after the break of Thanksgiving. We will push it out. And then my student engagement manager, Nolan, has crafted a nice little, very simple and easy survey for our elementary students, so I'm hoping with little smiley faces and little boxes. So we will get those out to the Chandler students and the Alden students after I meet with those principals to see what they deem as the best way to do that. We have quarterly newsletters up on the food service page for anyone that wants to catch up on our events. And we are... We have student helpers at the high school during the ASP block. We haven't started that this year yet because Mr. Cotton-Herman wanted to just get everyone underway. So that's always fun and exciting when our students come into the kitchen and they love to make pizza. They love to do all the things, so it's a great time to talk to them, too. So basically, we're having a lot of fun. These are the events that have taken place and the events that we have scheduled in all the schools. We did our annual Apple Crunch Day over at Chandler, which is a lot of fun and very exciting. On that day, it's always the best apple they've ever had in their whole lives, even though they're there almost every day, but it's just a lot of fun. We did our Global Eats program at the high school, where we showcased China, and we did some dumplings with some special sauces and some fried rice, and that was a great day as well. We did a Discovery Kitchen event over at Alden. We did pumpkin applesauce, which, truth be told, I didn't think was going to go well, but they loved it. We got great feedback on that. The other day, yesterday, we just did... We have a new program featuring winter events, chilly days, warm bellies, and we did a... Where we will be featuring, pretty much every week, a new homemade chili and/or a homemade soup for the students. We did a chicken chili yesterday, which was a lot of fun. There's some pictures up on the Instagram page if you're interested. We will do a Student Choice event at the high school in December, and then we are going to revisit our hot chocolate holiday bar at the Alden and probably the middle school as well, because that's just a fun event. We will do that the week before we break for the holidays. What's new with us is we have a Dip Into Flavor. So basically, we have a new program where we are making homemade sauces for the kids. We've learned that kids love to dip sauce, dip everything in any kind of sauce whatsoever. It's like the most exciting thing. So we have... We've added a table at lunch just for all the different sauces, and the young gentlemen would really like that. So these are some of the featured sauces that we'll be making. It's a Korean barbecue sauce, a chimichurri ranch sauce, mango jerk chicken, and sriracha honey, and probably a few others I didn't add. And then we just had... The next slide is... Oh, is there... There should be a video. No video?
Oh, the video? I was having trouble...
I was wondering. It's not coming up.
I can try to get that slide up. Where was the video linked? It was like...
So it was just a video, so we can... It's okay. I'll skip that. But it was... Our friend Joe Ferguson got the kids to just do some testimonials on the school lunch program, and there were some familiar faces there, but it doesn't look like it's playing.
Where was the link when you...
It's probably on my drive. It's okay.
It's okay. Sorry, Kelly. I saw that there was a link, but I couldn't...
I'll play it next time. It was a great little feedback for the...
I saw a little link, and I couldn't figure out a play.
We had some familiar faces. Just wanted to chime in on the program. Okay, so program update. This is just a slide. You've seen the daily meals. Basically, we're just getting underway, and we have picked up right where we left off last year. So we're averaging about 1,460 reimbursable meals. That means the free lunch, free breakfast meals that we're doing. But in total, with the number of total meals that we're doing, it's around almost 1,900 a day. So that just means any extra meals that the students are purchasing outside of that free lunch, any adult teacher lunches, any staff lunching, basically our whole entire day. And this number is pretty good considering the enrollment has gone down, so enrollment's really big for us. So even a drop of 50 students is pretty significant. So we are right where we were. So I also expect this to grow generally at the beginning of the year. As we go on to the next slide, you'll see participation at each school. In particular, of note, I would... You probably look at Chandler. So last year, around 73% participation, and right now, we're at 65. That is very typical for that school. The little guys just will start with pizza, and then they grow. So the pattern is the same. So I fully expect if I'm here in the spring, we'll see participation numbers grow to probably the 62% if I had to guess. And we do have a decreased enrollment, so I think that even though the percentages look a little less, I think it's actually a little bit more. And then I also expect it to grow with just the uncertainty of the SNAP benefits and all of that. So I think that, just as a reminder to the community, that we are here. We're here. We have breakfast. We have lunch in all the schools. As that uncertainty rolls out, I'd love to see people utilize it more. So it's a great resource for the community. This slide here is pretty self-explanatory. The only thing, unless you have questions specifically, that I'll point out is in school year 2025, we did not receive supply chain funds where we hadn't the last three years. And at the bottom line there, you can see they were a pretty significant amount of funds, but they have deemed that we don't have a supply issue anymore from COVID, and those were discontinued last year. So even though the bottom line was a little bit less, in reality, it really wasn't, because if you add those supply... If you add that dollar amount in, we're about the same as where we were, so. When we take that... So the other piece to that is that bottom line goes directly back into the food service program here at Ducksbury, at Ducksbury Public Schools. And both... Lisa's been wonderful with anything that we need in the program. Believe it or not, the new school building is about 11 years old now, so things... You know, our equipment breaks down, and it's expensive to fix those things, but they are right on it. And we have made some... There's a new floor at Chandler, and there's some new caff tables over at Chandler. We've invested back into the program, and it's really nice. So it's nice to be able to do that. It's nice to have the support to do that. And yeah, it's been fun. And then I always like to just put some photos in there, just to... They tell the story. So we have our Apple Crunch Day. We have some samples going on for Discovery Kitchen. Last week, we had the breadboard. Students help us with some decorating of fun items for Halloween. You probably recognize some of these faces. Katie's giving out samples. Basically, where the department has a lot of fun, so you should stop by anytime you can. I like to put my staff up here. I always like to praise the staff. They are amazing. I can't say enough about them. Like this week alone, we had... We were hit by the plague a little bit. I had three people out. You wouldn't even know it. The students don't even know it. They just get it done all the time, all the time. They're just wonderful. And so I just want to give public kudos to them, because without them, their hearts are in the right place, and they love what they do, and they enjoy the students, so. Just some fun events. We did the opening day at Fenway last year, some fun Halloween. And then just reminders I like to add in there, so a lot of the questions that I get are for vegetarian options. What do we have offered, as well as gluten-free options at every school? And I just invite any parents or anybody that has any questions or any ideas or anything specific that their students like to eat or need to eat for any particular reason, just reach out to me. I can almost always make it happen, so I think that's it, unless anybody has questions.
No. The chicken chili got two thumbs up from my daughter, so that was an exciting new.
Yes, that's a nice little program. We will feature our new chili throughout the winter months and some homemade soup, so excited for that.
Yeah, it's fun. Does anybody have questions?
I just... You said this already, I think, but I just... The improvements, obviously, are coming out of the revolving fund.
So all those items up?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll see you in the spring.
Survey results and videos.
I'll get the video to work by then, because I know people are really disappointed, I'm hearing, from our TV audience at home, that they're waiting for the video, and I feel really bad. Because I can see the link to the video right there, and I've been clicking on it even before the meeting started. So I apologize, viewers at home, that I wasn't able to get the video working.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
All right, next up, we have MCAS results from 2025, which was last spring's MCAS.
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. Tonight, I am joined by three of our district curriculum supervisors. So we have Ms. Allison McHugh, the Humanities Curriculum Supervisor for grades 6 through 12; Mr. Mike Murray, the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Curriculum Supervisor for grades 6 through 12; Ms. Sarah Milner, who is our Curriculum Supervisor for all content areas in grades pre-K through 5. And we appreciate you providing us with the opportunity to share the MCAS results for Ducksbury this evening. This evening, we'll give you a brief overview of MCAS. We'll review a high level of the elementary data, then move into a high level of the secondary data. We'll make direct correlations between our needs and budget implications, and we'll be answering any questions you have. We'll not be presenting information on historical... Excuse me, achievement data that follows the presentation. However, it's there for your reference. It's important to note that our scores overall this year are good and above the state average. Our scores over time have remained fairly consistent, and we're either back to pre-pandemic levels or we're moving closer to that mark. For 2025, we just wanted to review the MCAS testing grades and content areas. For 2025, we just wanted to review the MCAS testing grades and content areas, course and background. This is a familiar slide and a familiar message, but one that's worth repeating. MCAS preparation and organization takes place throughout the year. The, there are many members of the staff involved in the preparation and organization, including assistant principals, curriculum supervisors, team chairs. The MCAS administration is truly a team effort. Teacher training for MCAS takes place with staff in March prior to the test administration at a faculty meeting, and the training is conducted annually to ensure all staff, including new staff, have current information. Daily schedules at the buildings have to be adjusted to ensure students have the most uninterrupted time to take the test. Special schedules may also be affected, and locations of teaching may be changed. Special education staff are also helping to administer tests and retests. In DHS, the teacher rooms are rearranged and rescheduled so testing can take place in the same area, and in Alden and DMS, materials are prepped and organized before testing. So we have to, the testing tickets, graphic organizers, extra paper, calculators. Technology is also heavily involved in the process, and all proctors need to be trained on the testing platform, which changed to Cognia last year. All students must have their working Chromebooks, which require the troubleshooting and tech support during test administration, and members of technology are also on hand during the testing days while this is happening to ensure that the network is functioning properly. We just want to note that these testing days are in addition to the assessments that are given through iReady, curriculum programming, such as IM, CKLA, and other forms of assessment. So there is quite a significant amount of test administration and assessment that's happening, especially at grade eight. While we compare historical MCAS data over time, MCAS itself has also evolved over time. Historically, changes include the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education's 2022 change to the score requirements for the class of 2026. So the, that meets expectation category minimum requirement for math and ELA was moved from four seventy to four eighty-six. The science meets expectation requirement remains the same at four seventy. More recent changes within the past year, to be specific, include the change in graduation requirements, the grade eight civics now being an assessment we can plan on moving forward, as well as a change to the type of questions in science that our students are taking, so applying practices and the skills, as well as DESI's use of AI to grade student writing initially. Why this is important to know is because Duxbury MCAS scores are used to compare the performance of Duxbury students to others, and our results are used by DESI to compare our performance this year with our performance in previous years, which comes up in our accountability, accountability ratings and classifications, which we'll move into now. So MCAS is only one of the assessments used to, and points of reference used to measure student performance, and one factor used to determine the district performance. The accountability system collects MCAS results in addition to data on high, high school completion, chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework completion, and our English learner, student progress towards English proficiency. A student is considered chronically absent when they miss ten percent or more of the school year. Today is the fifty-sixth day of school, so if a student has missed five days or more already to date, they would be considered chronically absent. Our Assistant Principals, Administrative Assistance, and Guidance Department are all involved in monitoring student absences and working with families of students who are in danger of becoming chronically absent. So overall, we have a hundred and eighty days, and students who are absent eighteen or more days for a full school year are identified and flagged by the state as chronically absent. This year, school, student presence in school is a focus for DESI, and it's important to note that attendance rates and students who are in school do well and better on assessments. Advanced coursework completion is also considered for accountability. We, as a district, must accurately report which courses our students are taking to the state. This is done as an effort between our Guidance Department and Erin Piantosio, who is our Manager of Data and Accountability. Erin reports this high school completion data and ensures that the students who are registered in our Aspen databases are our current students. There's a lot of management that happens with the position. It is important for MCAS because we need to have an accurate representation of who is in our district on the day of the test administration. We are fortunate, where we have, our records are primarily consistent, however, it is important to maintain accurate records to the state. The DESI profile data on the DESI website is pulled directly from our Student Information System, Aspen. Mrs. Mahegan, our World Language Curriculum Supervisor, also serves as our District English Learner Coordinator. Ms. Mahegan is responsible for coordinating access testing. Access meets US federal requirements under every Student Succeeds Act for monitoring and reporting L progress towards English language proficiency. It tests student language in the four domains of listening, reading, speaking, and writing, and the test administration for each student takes approximately two hundred and sixty-five minutes to go through. Duxbury Public Schools District Classification is not requiring assistance or intervention, and we are making substantial progress towards targets. Each of our schools that administers MCAS also has a classification, and you can see on this continuum where we are on the left-hand side of schools and districts not requiring assistance or intervention, and you'll hear in the next few slides that we are, our schools are either meeting or exceeding targets, or making substantial progress towards targets. At the Alden School, the school classification is not requiring assistance or intervention, and we have, we are meeting or exceeding the targets, and we've also linked the official accountability report for your reference as well. Duxbury Middle School is also not requiring assistance or intervention, and is making substantial progress towards targets. Additional information on the accountability report is linked. I also want to note that our accountability for 2025 takes into account our performance in 2025 in addition to the performance in 2024. Our performance in 2025 is weighted heavily, more heavily than the 2024 data, but both are considered. So there's always the current year and the year previous, too, that you're reporting on.
So is that where, sorry, Beth?
No, go ahead.
Can I ask questions while you go?
Go ahead.
Can you just do a quick refresh on, I mean, obviously, the DMS slide looks a little different, where substantial progress toward targets, can you give like a high level of where we were tagged there to begin with, that we are being monitored to determine our progress toward targets? And is it, it's because of 2024 data? Is that what you were just articulating?
So it would be a combination of both. So as we look at the middle school data report, you receive, oh, points are awarded for all students in achievement growth and for 2025 and 2024. So when we look at the achievement and growth at the middle school, we received the most points in English and science, and we received the least amount of points in mathematics. And then when you go into our growth, we had a growth of three out of four in English, and a math growth of two out of four. So those are the points that they use, so then there's a formula that is used to come up with the accountability rating. When we go into 2024 for the middle school and achievement, it is a similar scope where we, a similar report where English Language Arts, we received four out of four, in math, we received two out of four points, and then our growth was three out of four and two out of four. So it's taking into consideration that. In addition, they report out on lowest performing students, and there are points awarded in achievement and growth in those areas as well. For the high school, we are not requiring assistance or intervention, and we are meeting or exceeding the targets as well. So each year, DESI will then move our target to ensure that we continually improve, and we work to meet those new targets. MCAS is one piece of data that's used with other data sources to make instructional and programmatic decisions. While passing MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement, it remains an important data point for the state. In addition to using MCAS as part of the accountability system, MCAS scores are used to determine student eligibility for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Part of eligibility for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is students must score at least one proficient and one advanced score in ELA in math and MCAS. This fall, fifty-three seniors were notified they were eligible for the scholarship if they were admitted to a state college or university. And there's a different amount depending on the college or university that you are admitted to and attend if you receive this scholarship. So MCAS and your, the scores reported on MCAS are still important for, is still important for accountability, and is still important for items such as scholarships. One other acronym you'll hear this evening is SGP, which refers to student growth percentiles. DESI's student growth percentile is a score from one to ninety-nine that shows how much a student improved on a test compared to other students with past performance. It's really an indicator of how much did that student grow compared to other students that they can be compared to academically within the state. In order to calculate an SGP, the student growth percentile, the state must have at least two years of MCAS data on a particular student. So this is why we don't have SGPs for students in grade three, because it's the first year that they're taking MCAS. We don't have an SGP for grade eight civics, because this is only the second year that students are taking civics, and the same for STEM, as STEM is taken for the first time in fifth grade. Higher scores of SGPs indicate higher, greater growth. So an SGP of seventy-five means that the students grew more than seventy-five percent of their academic peers. Subsequently, lower, lower scores show less growth. The state considers typical growth to be between forty and sixty. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Milner, who is going to be reviewing the Alden School data.
All right, hi, everyone, thank you. It's good seeing you all. I do feel like I'm like missing my, like trusty sidekick here after eight years, so we'll see how that goes. So I'd like to start off by highlighting that in all three content areas, math, literacy, and science, we did outperform the state by twenty percent or more in the meeting and exceeding categories. When doing an itemized analysis in all of the, all the content areas, we did outperform the state on every item except for one ELA item that we matched the state on, which I think, looking at the scores, it might have just been a bad question, it's my opinion. In ELA, I'm not going to go through the slides, which you can see there, but just more point out some highlights from there. You know, you, we are trending upwards again in third grade after a small dip compared over the past couple of years. We had nice growth in fifth grade writing again for the second year in a row, and overall, our student growth has been of twenty percent above the state. For a pre-pandemic comparison, our SGP was fifty-six percent in 2019, which is considered in the typical growth band, and we're now at sixty-one percent, which is just pushing us into the stretch, or high growth band, I'm stuck on iReady words, the high growth band, which is nice to see. Back in 2019, we had meeting and exceeding students at seventy-one percent in ELA, and we are now at sixty-six percent, so we are getting close to closing that gap, which is nice to see, only five percent away. As you can see, we have across-the-board overall strengths in using main idea, key ideas, key details, pictures, vocabulary to make meaning of text and respond to the text. This is something we've been working on over the past few years, and it's also a huge focus with the CKLA program, so we expect to see that continue as a strength. Writing across the board is all content areas, it's still always an area that has some room for growth, and we do continue to work on that. We did, I do want to highlight that we had some really nice growth in our fifth grade writing scores this year. We do have high hopes for our writing with the recent implementation of CKLA, which has a strong and consistent writing instruction and application across all grades, K through five. It was one of our high priorities when looking for a new program. CKLA also places a large emphasis on developing students' oral language at a very early age, which research, research shows directly connects to reading and writing success in the later grades. We also are focusing on growth within our high-needs population. For ELA, on average, twenty-nine percent meet or exceed, which is disproportionately low, but we want to point out that most of those students, their student growth percentile falls into the strong growth band of at least sixty percent or higher, and that's something we definitely want to celebrate, is that personal success of individuals. One reason we chose CKLA, which is a core tier-one program and a knowledge-building program, is because it provides multiple entry points for all learners to engage with complex texts. It levels the playing field by strategically developing students' background knowledge across all the grade levels, so that can narrow disparities of their incoming knowledge and expectations of what they should know coming in, which gives at-risk learners a more equal footing in discussions, writing tasks, and comprehension. In math, we also, you know, outperformed the state in meeting and exceeding. Our student growth was twenty-five percent above the state. Pre-pandemic comparison, we have, we have closed the gap. In 2016, we had sixty-seven percent of our students meeting and exceeding in 2019, and this year, we have seventy-one percent of our students with an SGP comparison of, we were at fifty-seven percent, and we're now at sixty-four, putting us well into that high-growth area. Geometry is still a work in progress, it's something that we've been focusing on, and you know, it is, it's a fairly basic content piece of the content, up until third grade, it really kicks in, so I see some heads over there shaking, so, you know, it's a shift for the students, and we are working that, but we do see the scores start to rise a little in fourth grade, and then they're doing nicely in fifth grade in that area. Teachers have been working on fractions for the past couple of years, and we're happy to see that that's now become a strength for us. Our high-needs population scored an average of thirty-eight percent in meeting and exceeding, which is slightly better than ELA. Just like in ELA, we want to continue to implement best practices in math instruction for all students with a focus not only on the content standards, but also the practice standards. We have strong, a strong intervention team in place that supports the students. We have a great new math specialist who's supporting the teachers and working with our most at-risk students. And we'll continue to strengthen the foundational skills at Chandler, so that students are coming in with a more solid understanding of numbers and general math concepts. Okay, so for science, you know, it's a reminder that this is a culmination of the science they've been learning for the past few years, the standards and the work they've done. We did outperform the state, that, that data looks amazing, it's seventy-five percent or more, meeting and exceeding, slightly better with our high-needs population at forty percent, meeting and exceeding. The Alden, we have a local Alden Curriculum Committee that is working on updating the resources to enhance our hands-on labs and just having some more engaging opportunities for our students this year. And we'll continue to focus on the science practices, such as using and gathering appropriate information from charts and graphs, citing valid evidence for argumentations, and understanding representations for models, which is, those are all areas that are, we could use some improvement in. So for our next steps, I've just, I've just talked a little bit about some of these up there, but we're happy to see growth in all areas. We want to ensure that all students, including our high-needs population, continue to make meaningful progress and that that remains a priority. We will continue to explore how to strengthen our co-teaching practices, our intervention model, and utilizing our win blocks for targeted student support, the dedication of our classroom teachers, the reading and math specialists, the. The dedication of our classroom teachers, the reading and math specialists, the math tutors all play a vital role in supporting all the students' individual needs. It's also important to continue strengthening our core tier-one instruction through the ELA implementation and continuation of practices that have been put into place following the math review. I feel having a strong core tier-one instruction is what really impacts all students and supports all of our high-priority needs that we are always talking about. And it ensures that teachers have access to high-quality instructional materials and resources they need to be effectively meeting the needs of all students. Excellent. Any questions for me?
I'll just make a point of clarification, or at least for for because I have asked this in the past, just so everyone's kind of clear. So high-needs populations defined as folks who are designated low-income, economically disadvantaged, English-language learner, and students with disabilities, right?
Yes.
And thanks, Beth, because I was asking about what percentage of students fall into that bucket, and it's about twenty-three percent. So given that, and thank you for speaking to it. I know it was in kind of, it's very explicitly talked about in the slides. In the future, I would love to see that data included in the deck if possible. I mean, I know it's it's in the links that that are embedded in the presentation, but I think, you know, I think in with the DMS and DHS, I think there's some more specific callouts to to that. But I would, I think, seeing that data more regularly would would be great in the sense that because we often talk about closing the equity gap and and sort of that being a strategic priority.
Yeah.
And by by normalizing the numbers and in a way of saying like, here's how we're doing it, right? And so you mentioned student growth percentile, things like that. I think that would give a would enrich the discussion.
Right.
In addition to the like, you know, the great scores for the whole student population.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Can I add one thing to that point? The you said twenty-three percent.
Yep.
For high-needs, and those are the numbers I have as well. The the comparisons that are typically made are to the state. And I think the Massachusetts numbers for high-needs are sort of double what ours are. So I think to to emphasize Jen's point and to maybe take it a step further, I think in addition to seeing some of that, seeing that special education data, you know, loud and clear in the deck, I think it would be beneficial for us to see a more contextual comparison to districts that are similar to our more similar to ours, like Dart Districts and stuff like that, because the numbers are just very not apples-to-apples. We compare Duxbury to the the state. So I think that's a good point, and I just want to make sure that we're also just doing some more contextual comparisons as well.
I would say that we have done that in the past, and we can do that moving forward in the future, too. I think this year, we took a different approach, and the reason behind it was just that there were so many changes to the MCAS and and the approach and of different districts. But we're happy to reincorporate that into the slides moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, especially given, you know, we're talking about the budget after this, and you know, I I really appreciate Jen's question, because I wanted to zoom in on the special education and the high-needs population as well. Special education does represent like a fifth of our budget. It's twenty percent. So if not just for the school committee, I think that there are probably a good number of community members who are going to be concerned with that, you know, with that spend and that investment. And so I think it would be just, you know, appropriate to make it really loud and clear how we are investing that money with the data to sort of back it up.
And I mean, similar similarly, I think, and I I know I say this ask for this every year. I think the because it's just it's it's a point in time if we choose to look at it that way. And so and I know there are always caveats and asterisks and changes to how the test is designed, delivered, all those things. But I think it would always be helpful to see year-over-year trend data, because I think it's hard, like, again, it just it's it's not as meaningful to see this as a kind of one-off. And I know it's available to the community online, and you can run the numbers and spend hours running data on the DESI website. But I think when we look at, you know, return on investment for curriculum purchases and things like that, you know, I've heard it said that it can take between three and five years to see those changes over time. So in order for us to constantly kind of revisit that and look at the trend data, it's going to help us make that case. And so if we can do that consistently, and I also think it gives a sense of watching a cohort of kids move through, right? So if we're looking at grade-three Alden ELA, and then next year, they're grade-four, you know, ELA. So some way to sort of illustrate, again, change over time, because when we look at it as a one-year, it's it's hard to have it be meaningful, I guess. And when you talk about impact and knowing that it takes a long time to kind of make significant changes. And I think I'm saying this because I think there have been improvements, and you're voicing over those, you know, increases that we're seeing. But I think showing that in graph is often a little bit more visually obvious.
Are you looking for something in addition to slides fifty-six through sixty?
Did we just not get there? I'm sorry.
There's we added the historical distribution.
I saw that, yes.
So in addition to the historical distribution, are you looking specifically for a subgroup? Or is there something in addition to the historical data?
If you this is good historical data. I'm sorry, I do see this here. I think, I guess, a way of weaving, as I said, it's it's at the end, sort of as an appendices almost. But if when you guys are talking about that, to have it be something that is, I didn't mean to suggest that it's not there, but to have it be part of the conversation, because you're speaking about it. But again, for someone who didn't see the meeting or is just looking at the packet, I think I think there would be some pretty significant highlights that you could pull from that at the end to talk about change over time. And again, I'm I'm actually thinking this is hopefully going to be more telling as CKLA gets rolling. So just in that way. And and again, if you select the select the data that tells the story you want to tell, right? So the there's lots of information about trend data, but if there is something in particular that is specific to what we have been doing, investing in, talking about, focusing on, to your point, similarly about the sped data and having the high-needs population be something we consistently are talking about over the last three years in these presentations, I think that's something that we've beneficial, both just to have that historical information year-over-year, but also to inform, most importantly, budget discussions, quite frankly, and showing that the investment was, in fact, hopefully the right choice.
So in addition, what I'm hearing is that in addition to the slides that are presented, you'd also like Dart District information, high-needs information, and historical data in a different way, just included in the presentation itself.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I I would just like to see, I think, my points were really focused on special education and high-needs, just the comparative data and the sort of disaggregated data. That's it for me.
And I think I guess my point is that I see the data and the slides, but verbalizing what that means, because again, I I can study this and figure out and draw my conclusions based on what the chart says. But pulling that information out to kind of make the case is is what I'm actually speaking about, not just adding more charts.
Okay.
And pulling it in where it is going to resonate within this particular year's data, or you're seeing something specific or unique that that is going to illustrate that for the public and and me.
Thank you. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Mari for mathematics, secondary level.
How are you? Can you hear me okay? All right. So I am Mike Mari. I'm the STEM supervisor. I just wanted to, before we started with math, I just wanted to put a shout out to all the folks on the math curriculum implementation and all the work that went behind the new IM program that we have at the middle school. It's it's to to watch it happen, to watch teachers run this program in the middle school classroom, and to see kids actively engaged in math is unlike anything I have ever experienced as a student, right? From from kindergarten through, you know, my master's degree. So it's like, if you see it happen, right, you get you get a real feel for it. And I've been in classrooms quite a bit this year, and math is obviously new to me. This work is the the work you see in front of you is the work of of the teachers, is the work of Mr. Peseggio. This this work, like, all got put into the mix and is up on the screen. And it in just as raw data as as Laurel was saying earlier, like, as raw data, it's not as telling. When you see it happen, you get sort of hooked on what you can see progressing, especially with our high-needs students, because the deeper learning is really happening in these classrooms. That's sort of just the intro to all of this. But typically, when you're implementing a new curriculum program, you see like a dip. You see a like a that first year, no one's comfortable with it. This is new. This is a new curriculum. I don't know. I'm not comfortable. This isn't the way I've done it, right? And so kudos to the teachers for like digging in, leaning into this and and pushing forward. And and kudos to the kiddos for for working hard in a new way of really thinking and communicating about math. So to the to the slide here, this is showing us, you know, this is the sort of stuff you've seen on the other slides, but we're outperforming the state from sixth through eighth, which is not really what we're looking at, right? I mean, it's it's obvious, but it's it's something we've seen so much that we want to we want to see us go from great to stupendous rather than great to great again. And I guess that's sort of the the conversation that we've been having as we analyze this dataset. So to move towards stupendous, I have some some areas of development on the bottom, but the strengths, I didn't really outline per target area. So in grade six, we saw a lot, we saw the highest percentage above the state in expressions and equations, and then the number systems between like six-point-four-two and about ten-point-seven-five percent above the state. So that was those were their their two highlights in grade six. In grade seven, our highlights were in geometry at fourteen-point-two percent above the state and eight-point-nine percent above the state in ratios and proportions. So the what's hard for me, I'll be totally honest with you, as math being a new subject area, is that these these standards are different from mine. So as I see them, I'm actually reading them and not just firing them off like I would in biology or science. But so what happens in the standards for middle school kids is all of a sudden, in grade eight, we change. We're just going to flip all these around, and we have really good strength in functions at twelve-point-seven-five percent, and statistics and probability rocket up to seventeen-point-three percent. So we're we're sort of finding our way, right, in this new curriculum. And I think part of that is the curriculum itself, and part of that is the comfort level with it, the pacing, and things like that. So as we dig into year two and we increase our comfort and compatibility with this program, I think we're going to see a leveling out, and we'll see things to sort of start to go back to where we would expect. That was slide seventeen. I went with yellow paper because I my eyes are so old, but that's what I need. I don't know if anyone else is there, but.
We're all there.
So on our next steps is to stay the course. If you if you saw it happen, it's high-quality instructional materials. You're seeing this is this is the kind of stuff where students across the grade level, across your spectrum, like from the high-needs kids, from a special-needs kids, from a economically disadvantaged kids, are going to latch on to this program, and they're going to do well. It's 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 going to happen. We just have to stay the course. I think I need to spend time revisiting timelines with our math staff at the middle school to optimize, like, how are we doing in each unit, rather than sort of getting caught up in the race at the end as we get closer to MCAS. We do need to look at grade six with statistics and probability, because this is the place where we were like significantly below the state. I had on like paper, what was it, nineteen nineteen-point-six-six percent? But stats is the big one there, right? So this is hard, because when you're looking at a test like this, a couple of questions can really throw it. And as you're implementing a new curriculum, this can just happen, right? And so I don't, like, we're in year one, and we have to just breathe. But that was the most telling, like outlier from some of the data. I think high-quality tier-one instruction that we're we're doing right now with a focus on successful co-teaching and collaboration is going to be our our answer to that gap between our high-needs students and all students of eighty-three to fifty-five percent here.
Well, and I think we've also asked for a math tutor for the middle school to help this.
Math specialist.
Math specialist, sorry.
Yeah, so, yes.
Yeah. Okay. That would be helpful.
Let's see, where did it go? I'm on the wrong slide. All right. So again, kudos to the teachers. This is like one that I've always wanted in in science when it was was my only baby, but like, I really can't describe. And it, you know, part of it is, like we said, there's cohorts of kids that are running through the school, but the tenth graders last year knocked it out of the park, and and the teachers helped them do that, right? So we're we're not seeing a red line on the Duxbury graph, and that's just that's just awesome. Kudos to the teachers. Kudos to Mr. Peseggio for his work for his work here. I, you know, I think we should all just take this in and take a breath with that, like zero that that red line that's just not there. But still work to be done. There is. Nineteen. Continue to build the relationships, the strategies, especially in co-taught classes, where we can sort of push our students that need the most support as much as we can. But yeah, kudos. Great work there. Summary on that one is support the rigor in instruction for our math program here at DHS, like, support our teachers. We're looking, we just had a conversation today at what the curriculum options are for our student our juniors and our seniors in the elective courses versus some other options, including a business option that is an AP program, but also a a financial algebra program to help students who are going to take either, you know, placement exams for the, let's say, the electricians union, just for giggles, or at state colleges or or any other university. So to help those kids who don't have those rock star AP scores to to not have to take a an introductory math college class, basically. So that's where we're pushed. So those are sort of what we're looking at in math for DHS. Any questions? Should I have asked for questions? I don't.
Well, I don't know if I should hold this until the end, but I you can tell me if I need to. So you pointed out the the no red line in math. I think that, why don't we, why don't you keep going? Because I think the news in ELA is just as almost just as encouraging for grade ten. So maybe I'll wrap my question until after that.
Brilliant.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm asking a question now, I'm answering my own question, and I'm deferring the question.
Excellent.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Before I go into the data on this slide, I just want to make sure that we have a baseline understanding of the AI scoring of the MCAS at this point, because that has been the most significant change in the last two years especially. So from third to eighth grade, all of the student-written responses are machine-scored. And then from third to eighth grade, ten percent across the state have a human reader. This year, there was some, once the human readers came in, there was some pushback or some changing of some scores. The middle school was affected by that with one score which was raised. So just if you heard about that in the news, we were an affected school. But across the state, any of the scores that were changed were raised. So that's just something to keep in mind. At tenth grade, they're they get two scores. Their first score is machine-scored. The second score is a human reader. So they they do have a human reader at the tenth grade at this point. I think it's also important to know that the machine scorer is a closed LLM. If you've played around with any AI yourself, you know that not all AIs are built the same. The the state is utilizing a closed LLM that has been trained on essays that were scored by human experts. So it should know what to do. It's still a machine that's not really smart yet, right? The LLMs get smarter over time, so it's only been scored with X number of essays. It'll get smarter over time. I think it's really important to understand that, because the machine is good at what it's good at, which is inside the box. I would say that I think it's safe to say that we're we got a haircut. And I mean that across the state, that like, we got a little off the top, because the machine isn't very good at great writing. It's good at what it's good at. It's good at what it's good at. And having talked with my job alikes across the state, especially at other districts like ours, we're all feeling it in the same way and we think that we got a haircut, that we're really looking at some of those top scores that we were expecting and tracking that data over time. So I just wanted to be clear about that at the top, that we don't have a lot of answers yet, but we're definitely paying attention to it. Now, let's take a look at the data. So we do have a lot to celebrate in ELA that when you look at sixth grade, 69% of our sixth graders scored in exceeding and meeting. 61% of our seventh graders scored in exceeding and meeting. And 73% of our eighth graders scored in exceeding and meeting. Like my colleagues, I can say that we are consistently above the state in all category in exceeding and meeting as well as in every assessed standard. So you'll see that in the slides that are at the end. Some of our highest standards that we're scoring in are key ideas and details and vocab acquisition. Additionally, our student growth percentiles are consistently in the typical and high typical range. Our key area of improvement is to focus on our high need students. The results show that our high need students are disproportionately represented in the lower bands on MCAS. Like the elementary data, our high need students also have high typical and high SGP's and that's certainly something to celebrate, that like we are seeing growth year after year, which is to me, the most important number. But it does mean we still have to look at our achievement areas and really focus on these students. So we can take a look at the next slide. So because high need students are our focus area, our next steps are based on adult time. So I have restructured how our teachers learn together. The first change is that ELA and history teachers have department time together. So we've never had that before. And it means we are able to create stronger literacy threadlines between the subjects to reduce the silos and create more coherence in reading and writing instruction. So that's number one. And then additionally, during our department time, we're working in learning groups as I've listed there. And that's so that we can focus on some key growth areas. And the topics are listed on the slide, but I'm going to talk more about it after I talk about the high school scores. But on this slide, I do want to take a moment to just shout out that wish list item there because I sort of anticipated a question of like, well, what do you need to focus in on this area of growth? And when I think about it, the answer for me is structured, supported, consistent time to collaborate, scoring and feedback protocols. We have the right people. We have the right resources, like everything. We don't have enough time and we don't have enough time together. Like that's what we're missing right now.
Can I ask a quick question? What does it mean to calibrate scoring and feedback protocols?
Yep, so those are two different things, but thank you for that question. So to calibrate scoring means that all the English teachers can sit in a room and make sure that on an essay, we would all score it the same.
Oh, okay.
And that could mean like high school versus middle school, but like definitely if we have the MCAS rubric, for instance, and we're scoring your essay and I give it a four and she gives it a three, like we have a problem because we don't have the same expectations. So we don't have the time to calibrate.
Okay, thank you.
And then from there, once we have the same scores, are we also giving students the same feedback or similar feedback and using the same language? Do we all use, our language is much closer than maybe five years ago, but just making sure like we all use thesis to mean the same thing, topic sentence, all of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, we can go to the 10th grade, I think. We also have a lot to celebrate at the high school. 84% of our 10th graders scored in the exceeding and meeting categories. Additionally, our SGP is at the high end of typical growth. And while the gap between high needs and non-high need students decreases in the 10th grade, it's still a focus area because it is still a disproportionate number. So 34% of high need students scored at partially meeting compared to 11% of non-meeting. So it is definitely still a focus area. And if you want to go to the next slide, which should look very familiar to you, right? My approach is the same, that like I'm really looking at the way that adults can learn with and from each other so that we are creating more coherence. And I'll just give a shout out because it's a department meeting day. So we were in our communities, our learning communities today and the literacy group is focusing on key strategies across English and history that they're implementing together so that they can design at the margins and really think about the kids who aren't typically succeeding. Our making thinking visible group is using Project Zero to create protocols in class so that they're actively teaching kids what it means to be a critical thinker and how to show that and like working through those steps. So they don't feel as tempted maybe to just use ChatGPT. And then our AI group, like AI is a big topic for us right now, obviously. It's everywhere, right? And it makes life really simple sometimes. But what does it mean as a learning tool? So we really focused on what AI can be for a student-led inquiry tool so that they don't use it necessarily just to like get my homework done, but like how do I use it to be better at what that skill is, especially in things like research and some like high level critical thinking areas?
Back to him or do you want to stop for questions?
Could I just say, I really appreciated like your, I thought it was very crisp and I really liked that you're just like areas of development. Bam, here's where, you know, and the plan to move forward. So thank you and it's maybe a potential model to like consider for all of these breakdowns for the schools. The other question I had, which is, you know, some of the analyses in the slides kind of talked about like comparison to the state versus our own development and then this one has SGP a lot. Like is there, is there a standardized way that we think about these? Because, or I mean, I'm sure we think about all of them and it just, you know, you have whatever time you have to put in here, but I'm just curious if, or just a piece of feedback or observation would be that if we had kind of a consistent way of.
From us, you mean?
Yeah, exactly, across the school. You know, no changes needed now, but like it would make it a lot, I think, easier to compare if we're all using kind of the same language and maybe you do that internally, but whatever. That's just my unsolicited two cents on like what would be helpful. So thank you.
I have one question before you move on. So this gets to the encouraging news about grade 10 in math in ELA. So the, so as I look at grades three through eight, right? So the red bar on grades three through eight, if I'm doing my math right, that's roughly 5% of our, each grade in three through eight is averaging around 5% of not meeting expectations. It's about like 140 students. In grade 10, that number plummets to zero. Zero in math and maybe a fraction of a percent or a percent one in ELA. So my question is, and we don't have to answer it tonight, but like what is going on? Like what interventions are being introduced in grade 10 that is positively impacting that number? And can we introduce it earlier? You know what I mean? Because it's great. It's just, you know, it's.
I mean, I think we've always attributed it.
A little bit further downstream.
Well, I think we've always attributed in years past to it was required for diploma. So that did change the way students entered into that space. We've anticipated a dip there as it isn't a graduation requirement anymore and haven't really felt it in the way that maybe some other schools have. And but that's new also. So I think the next, like it's going to be telling what happens over the next couple of years. I do also think that there's two years between eighth grade, you know, eighth grade to 10th grade test, a lot happens in that two years. And I don't think you can underestimate like what happens when you're 14 versus 60 and taking a test.
So graduation motivator and, so graduation motivator and sort of that gap of time is freshman year.
I think that's part of it. I don't know if you have a different answer.
Yeah, it's a complex system, right? You're looking at different cohorts of kids running through. You're looking at obviously different maturity levels. So there's just so many variables put into, you know, pardon the math joke, but there's so many variables put into this that it's really hard to nail it down. But yeah, it's telling. It's clear, right? There's a significant drop. We're down. And kudos to the teachers, kudos to the kids. I don't have my best answer because I'm not K to 12. But I do think some of it is maturity. Some of it, you know, so the fact that it counts, we're in high school now, okay. In Duxbury, like we talk about the portrait of the graduate to kids specifically. Hey, this is what it means to be a resilient and flexible learner. Hey, this is what it means. Not that we don't do that in the middle school. I just think that that combined with the maturity level of the kid in front of you creates sort of that, you know, starts the motor, I guess.
Well, maybe to your point about collaboration time, maybe collaboration time can be sort of looked at a little bit more three dimensionally as well so we can figure out how to, you know, have the teachers work together even at different grade levels.
I think also, I would just say to that, that we like to think that the culmination of efforts from pre-K through 12 get the kids to where they need to be in grade 10. And I think that we've worked really hard as a committee and as a district to make sure that there was intervention opportunities for our students. And so it's hard for parents and students to see partially meets or not meeting expectations along the way. But I think our interventions and our focus on meeting every single student where they are and looking for that growth eventually gets them where they need to be. And it's hard to wait until grade 10. But middle school MCAS is notoriously very challenging. And it's not a Duxbury issue. It's a statewide issue of how challenging the test is for the students. There's a big jump from grade five MCAS to grade six. And so I think, I don't want to say that our high school teachers aren't amazing because they are, but I think that it's not a magic bullet that comes in at the high school that suddenly the way it's being run makes the kids suddenly successful. I think it really is the efforts every grade along the way so that when our kids get to that 10th grade test, they have great success here and we're really proud of that. But with that said, we want to have that same achievement at every single grade level and that's always our goal. But intervention is key and we have supported and invested in that in the past years to make sure that's happening at all schools. And I think you can probably remember when there was not a lot of intervention available unless you were on an IEP for our secondary students, not that long ago.
Right, yeah, that's helpful.
I also just.
I see my son's math scores back in the day.
I'd also just like to acknowledge the test fatigue. Our eighth graders have.
Oh, so much testing.
Four tests that they're taking for MCAS. They have eye ready. There is, that is eight days of MCAS testing that they're hours in a seat, answering questions, answering open response in addition to eye ready assessments. So that is also something where the middle schoolers certainly have more assessments that they are taking at the same time as well.
And they're 12, 13, and 14 years old at that. Yeah, because also it's really challenging.
But you don't take into account sort of the developmental stage like as a whole child. I hope we do, but maybe we should be highlighting that more frequently. But having middle schoolers in my life, in my house, yeah. I don't think sitting down and taking the MCAS, I mean, I actually don't. It just doesn't hold much weight for me when you think about what they're going through developmentally from a social emotional standpoint and whether that test is really indicative. But Matt, to your point, I think what you're highlighting is something that I think I'm trying to articulate and not doing a very good job, which is when you look at this over time, the district is doing something right in how we are supporting and intervening with the kids who are not, who are in those orange categories. And so like what is that? How do we define it? How do we communicate it? And how do we describe what it costs? And I don't mean that to be crass. I just mean, why is that investment so critically important? And if we can, I pulled out my strategic plan binder because I think this is going to be critically important in the next year of figuring out, you know, these test scores are indicative in theory of something that's happened over the course of like the last three years probably. So you've, in 2022, you said, okay, this is, each year you do that, right? This is where we're struggling. This is where we've chosen to focus our attention. And now we are seeing that payoff. So just figuring out a way to keep that like trend narrative going for us, for the community. And I think we do it when we ask questions and we pull it out periodically when we're talking about something specific. But I think it's sort of also what Jen is talking about and how you illustrate and highlight the trend information because quite frankly, it's not about the scores. It's about what are we doing that is producing the results that we are seeing and want to see and to continue to see? And what does that take from a staffing perspective, from a resource investment perspective, all of those things? So I think Matt has highlighted what is important, which is we're doing it right all along the way. And when they reach that place where they can sit and take a test in grade 10 and maybe, you know, actively engage in that, you guys, they're doing it. So I think that's a huge benefit and figuring out how to continually illustrate that is going to be really important. Let's stop talking now.
Okay, keep going.
So science and engineering, six to 12. So this is, you can just see the comfort come back into my shoulders. So we're outperforming the state in meeting exceeding. Again, these are sort of the similar trends that we're seeing across. This one, we noticed tech ed and life science were among the strongest with 11.5% and 13.1% above the state. Physical and earth doing well, still at 9.7 and 9.2 above the state. But we're still doing well here. This is another cumulative test where the STE program, the SEPUP program runs six, seven, and eight. And so we're seeing kids in eighth grade take this test, okay? That being said, some of the teachers are doing a little bit of, you know, okay, guys, remember how we did this back in sixth grade to hit those standards that were addressed in sixth and seventh grade? And so kudos to all our STE teachers, but also to that eighth grade group who are pushing the kids that little bit to just remind them of some of those older standards. And science practices, right? So this is where we're starting to see the science performance assessment come in, where kids are starting to get tidbits of these. They're like simulations that kids are taking. What happens when Janie takes her electric scooter and she charges it this fast? And there's simulations that the kids are plugging and playing on the MCAS. So we're seeing that science performance assessment sort of start to get introduced to these kids. And we'll see more of that in the years to come where we'll actually sort of count what else is going on here. Same thing, high need students in STE, more supports for them. Rigorous co-teaching strategies to challenge and support those kids. 73% beneath the meeting and exceeding mark compared to 42% for all students. So you're seeing a significant gap there again. But again, like you said, it's the whole student, it's a middle school student and so the maturity level is different from the high school. But that's some areas of development for us. Overall, I think when we're doing science right, we're focusing on the science practices. So kids are doing science. What we can do is jump in, continue with our working groups to look at informational text because they need to read to take these texts. They need to understand and come up with answers based upon what they're reading. So every teacher being a literacy teacher is sort of something they hear at the middle school and the high school all the time. And my chair just went down as I got nervous. Did anyone see that?
No, nobody noticed.
No?
Probably shouldn't have. I kicked the lever with my foot. Department working groups that we have now, we have strategies for informational text as a tool to advance students with the student abilities to access, using resources from the SEPUP curriculum. So the teachers are actively working around building rubrics and setting up learning activities for students that push their ability to dig into informational text. Working with students to prepare the science performance assessment, which is coming up officially soon. Is it next year that we run live with that? I wasn't sure. And then continuing to support that high quality tier one instruction with effective collaboration and successful co-teaching. So really looking at those models of co-teaching that push all learners in different ways, right? So really looking at co-teaching as a way to support all students and to really drive and support those kids that are, that need it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Also, by the way, there's a whole show about a guy who has an embarrassing chair incident on Apple TV. incident on Apple TV right now.
For real?
It's hilarious. Yeah, it's called The Chair Company.
The Chair Company?
It's you.
Yeah. It's wildly uncomfortable to watch. You should check it out.
I didn't think, I thought it was kind of cute. Do you guys think it was embarrassing?
His was far worse, but I just wanted to share that. But so for, there's a lot of, a lot of the kind of next steps are around effective collaboration and successful co-teaching models.
Yes.
Just from my own understanding, we're really talking about like gen ed and special ed and like the model there of how, okay, that's, does it, I'm sure it's more complicated than that, but is that generally what we're referring to?
Yeah, so when we have co-teaching in support, so we have supported classrooms and we have co-taught classrooms, as far as, as instruction goes. Supported classrooms often have, and folks can correct me if I'm, I'm a gen ed guy, so you can correct me if I mess this up. But in the supported classroom, oftentimes you have what we call an instructional assistant here, right? Okay, in Pembroke, we call it something different. And in a, in a co-taught classroom, what you really want to see is a commitment that we have two teachers in the room. And that two teachers, after years of collaboration, we talked with someone in the hallway this morning, get to a place where they both know the material enough to help students succeed in the content as well as the, the content area teacher learns ways to make that content more accessible to the special needs student. So we, so we really mesh those two roles so that when you walk in the room as, as an observer of, of a co-taught classroom, you, it's not just that you can't tell who that, who the content area teacher is. You just see two professionals working with kids and they're consistently making an engaging and deeper learning community out of that room. That's, that's the push, right, from my end? And that, that makes it a classroom where you can see really rigorous, solid growth out of kids. Is that?
It does, yeah. The reason I asked is because I have questions related to the special ed budget, but so that's why I was asking with, because I see this a lot, but I, yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think what I'm hearing, which is natural, Allison, I was thinking of it when you were talking about the classroom and what you're saying, Mr. Murray. I mean, MCAS was supposed to be if the students are learning throughout the year, then they will pass the test. You don't have to teach to the test. It's just a natural progression, right? So the supports, the co-teaching, what we are offering in the Duxbury Public Schools is what is allowing the kids to succeed. So I think kudos to the, the teachers, the staff, the, like you're saying, all the teachers, if you have different English teachers that would grade a rubric in a different fashion, then the kids might not pass. So it's that age old, well, you had so and so, and you had so and so, right? So we've gotten away from all that. And I think it's just really important that the community knows we need to fund the sources, fund the teachers, find the time for collaboration, that it's so important. And if those natural things that should occur in public schools happen, then the students will be successful. And I think you're highlighting that brilliantly. So thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to shout out to the STE folks, I said it for the math folks, but, you know, great job to the teachers, great job to the kids, great job to, to all the staff for helping them with this hurdle. The, this one, at the high school, the bio, this was a, we, in terms of various of, right, we succeeded the state, there were two questions. And this one, this is, this is my wheelhouse, right? This is like 29 years of teaching bio, right? And so you, you sort of knew the MCAS test was coming, you sort of knew the kinds of questions you got. And the two questions that we, we didn't do as well as maybe, maybe some of the other ones. One was crossing over, which is typically, we introduce it, we sort of, we talk about it, but the model that they used was a little tricky for, for students, right? And so we have to look at crossing over a little bit, and then protein synthesis. And then polygenes is a way that, the reason that I'm taller than my sisters is because of the certain amount of genes that I have for tallness, right? So it's not this typical blue eye, brown eye thing that we, we may have learned. And so we're going to dig in as a biology department into, okay, how do we, how do we introduce these kind of tougher questions for kids? But again, great job to the science tech ed teachers on this. So sometimes those questions can be missed because of needs and working on that science practices of modeling. And we talked about polygenic traits and collaboration useful of the co-teaching model. Yeah. Students who are 14% higher and partially meeting expectations for those, kudos. Again, you've, you've heard this, this slide already. Any questions on STE? Back to you, Allison.
Thank you. Well, if you've had enough of MCAS, welcome to the life of an eighth grader because they take all of these tests. So let's just keep that in mind by the time they get to the civics test. They've done a lot of testing. This slide goes over what the test consists of, and this is our first year with comparable data. So the test has two main parts. The first is the performance task, and that's where they analyze sources, including articles, graphs, graphics, and they have to construct a written response. And the second part of the test is multiple choice, multiple select, and text enhanced questions, just like the other MCAS tests. And we are proud of our civic scores. Our scores are among the highest on the South Shore. And when we, like, looking at the comparative data, we, we do definitely have some key areas that we're keying into, but the civics teachers are especially proud of our scores on constructed responses. It isn't our highest score. If you go down to that slide, it isn't like the highest of all the categories, but it's what they're most proud of because of what it demands of students is, it is an area of critical thinking. And we do far outperform the state on it. So even though it's not our highest category, there is like the wide gap between us and the state, which shows like what we're doing is working. And in our effort to get better, now that we have some comparable data and really understand where we need to lean in on, we have, we've got two projects that we're looking into. The first is the resources through Democratic Knowledge Project. There's a grant opportunity that we're looking into. We're going to be visiting some schools who are using the resources to see if it's the right fit for us. And then we have opportunity to create cross-curricular learning for the state required civics project. So the history teachers and the English teachers are tackling that major eighth grade project together in really exciting ways. So I will be inviting you at the end of the year to come see that.
Civics questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any civics questions? No? Okay.
As you've heard tonight, MCAS data is one indicator used among many indicators of, as information used by our teachers to make instructional decisions. Data is used by administrators in the district to make instructional systematic, systemic, and programmatic changes. Changes and improvements are directly tied to decisions made during the budget process, decisions about staffing and resources. Tonight, we heard the continued need to focus on our co-teaching practices and to continue to effectively implement high quality tier one instruction and high quality research-based resources. Effective co-teaching requires staffing levels that maintain manageable class size and caseloads. Our systems, the levels of support provided by reading specialists, math specialists, tutors, and teachers during ASP is essential. It's imperative that we continue to provide students at the secondary level with options and opportunities through electives. Electives, while not required, are academic classes that complement and build skills and practices that are also assessed on MCAS. Lastly, administrators are required to ensure students and teachers' needs are met and ensure that instructional systems and programmatic changes are made and directly align with the needs based on our data. We must continue to make investments in our current co-teaching model and high quality tier one instruction and materials. We're happy to take any additional questions at this time, but I want to first just thank and highlight our curriculum supervisors who are here tonight, who have all taken on additional roles and responsibilities this year. I think tonight is only one small component and aspect of what they do, and it highlights truly their professionalism, their dedication. They are truly all here for students. And we are so fortunate to have these three professionals working with us and working for our students because they go above and beyond and they truly do, are here and are improving the environments in our classrooms every single day. And they are taking on different content areas that they have not had expertise in, and they are just diving in headfirst and really putting in the work, the time, and building the relationships where it matters. And so I just want to thank them and highlight the amazing work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I add to that? Because I, I want to sort of cast that in a, in a different way. So Mrs. Miller, you made a remark right at the beginning that you were hoping to be able to get through your presentation because your counterpart wasn't here anymore. And Mr. Murray mentioned a couple of times that math is new to him, which is sort of scary and frightening. But it speaks to, you know, to Dr. Wilcox's point that our curriculum leadership has been diluted, and that's a problem. So that, I think the news today has been really, really encouraging. I look at that news not only as a reflection of the great work that you guys are doing, but the investment that we've been able to make previous to the cuts that we had this year. And I think it's important for the finance committee to hear that. We've got the good representation in the back of the room, the community to hear that, that, you know, that to me, the, the accomplishments that we've been able to make over these last few years are a direct, there's a direct through line to the investment that we'd be able to make in the schools, and we are not making those investments anymore. So I echo Dr. Wilcox's sentiment that you guys are going above and beyond, but it's sort of sad and discouraging to think that you continue to have to go more above and more beyond because we've unfortunately had to spread our curriculum leadership thin. So thank you for the work that you're doing, and I'm sorry.
I have one more question, sort of to piggyback on that. So I, I want to give each, I think the lack of curriculum supervisors is obviously clear. We've talked about that. But I am curious from your perspectives, because you are in the buildings, in the classrooms, in each of your respective subject areas, but also just in the buildings and in the classrooms. And I would ask if there's anything that any of you would want to share that could, we've talked a lot about what was the impact, and I think part of the challenge is it's still the beginning of the school year. So to Matt's point, up until this point, we've had this pretty amazing funding, whether it was from COVID, we've obviously seen that run out, and then last year. So this is the first school year where we are operating at a, at a true deficit. And if there's anything that you want to take a minute to highlight about, we are going to get into this next about what we are asking for and what we need back. I think we've all voiced concerns about whether or not, in fact, what we're asking for and what we need back is enough. So I want you to take an opportunity right now to share with the public and us, anything that you might want to share along those lines.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. You know, there's a lot of things, Alden is, is a fabulous school, and I love being there, and the staff has been so welcoming. And it's great to just see the continuity between the two schools and to see students that I, you know, saw for several years. So there's a lot of benefits in that aspect. But I will say what is impacted the most is my FaceTime with teachers. And when you say something like, oh, and you're in the classrooms, like, that's, that is the area that, supporting the teachers as well as I want to be. And I, I don't want to say that as if I'm, I'm not supporting them, but, you know, there's, there's double the work and there's, there's a lot going on. So I'm always feeling kind of the pressure to make sure that I'm still up to my standards, maybe, up to the standards they expect me to be up to. I want them to still be coming to me for questions and as a resource. And I don't know if they're feeling the impact of maybe stepping back a little, thinking like, oh, she's, she's busy, so going to other resources. I want to still be there for them as that strong support that I have been. And I'd say that's the biggest impact is just, just being able to be there for the teachers as quickly as I'd like to be and as often, and having the FaceTime being split across the two buildings. And it's great that I have these, you know, great teachers at both schools that are amazing. And especially during an implementation year, I have these, you know, fabulous private teachers that we had that are a great resource for everyone else, and then these really strong intervention teams at both schools that I completely, you know, partnered with and leaning on every single day. All of that is great, but that's also, you know, having all those roles in place is really imperative to, to maintain the work that I'm doing. So I think that's probably where I, I feel is the, the biggest impact. And to me, that's a really big impact.
I mean, I don't think I'm really winging it. I think the, you know, from a personal level, the hardest thing for me is not the extra work. It's, it's honestly, I miss period three. I miss the being in the classroom and teaching. Like, that was part of my job responsibility, and I, I mean, I miss it like, like oxygen, you know? So I think, and I, and I get it, like, it had to happen, but I'm not, I could not do anything more. But I think the, the implication, like, I'll give you an example, today after our department meeting, a rookie teacher asked me to come in because her mentor was, gave her a new tool to use tomorrow. And she asked me if I could come in tomorrow, first or second period. And I, I said, yes, absolutely. And then I said, wait, 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 wait a minute. Let me, let me just check my calendar because I don't know what other things I have. You know, do I have a, a meeting with Better Lessons? Do I have a meeting with IM? Do I have a science thing to do, a tech ed thing to do? Do I have to schedule the machines to be rebuilt in the shop classes? Like, so I guess it's that ability to just say, immediately say, yes, I'm here to support you, but I, I got to check on the other folks. It's the best way to say it. And I, I guess the only thing I would ask is that we don't, like, I couldn't do it without the incredible professionalism of the staff, from central office to the building leadership, to the teachers, to the IAs. Like, I could not do this. I cannot tell you, I've never, in four different schools, in 30 years, 30 plus years, I've never met, not to throw shade on any other district, but I've never met a more professional group of people who put students first. And so without them, it, it, that's where you, that's where it really falls apart.
I think I can echo everyone with time, teaching, and, and our teachers, right? Like, yes, and I think there are also some elements of losing the point two that we had for teaching for the budget, you know? We were a point two. So those kids didn't disappear, but that class did, right? So budgetarily, like, that, that had impact. I chose last year to teach, to do, to teach in a co-taught setting so that I could model for my new teachers some really important strategies. I don't have that place anymore. I also, I had a touch point for co-teaching that, like, I don't have in the same way anymore, and I think that that's a real loss. I don't feel it yet because I still have those relationships, but over time, that will, that could potentially change. But like, we're, we're talking about the, the class itself and where those numbers ended up. We're really feeling, I taught a freshman class, like, the freshman co-taught classes this year are too big. That like, our averages are good. Our co-taught classes are too big in the humanities. And that for me is priority number one moving forward. And I do not have the, the right resources at this moment to make sure that I can fix that problem. And that is a money problem.
Is that gen ed teachers, special ed teachers, all of the above?
So you, we need to have a fixed number of courses, and you need to have the right number of adults on both sides to, at the right time to make the matrix work. It's a really complicated system. And we have to, we're planning now for next year's schedule to really get on top of it. And we have to, we're planning now for next year's schedule to really get on top of all of this, but all of that, we're all, we're all money. We all represent money, and like, you have to have the right people, like, the right number of people to, to have that for the right, for the kids who need the extra support. And that is our focus area.
And I don't know, you probably can't answer this, and maybe BJ or Beck could. Is the number of special ed, is the number of the special ed population increasing with the upcoming grades, or is it steady?
Not substantially. No, it's pretty steady.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, go home and put on your PJs, rock stars. Thank you.
While we're transitioning to the budget, just to kind of wrap up MCAS, I just want to say, our Duxbury students are the absolute best, because I've been just reading and paying attention to other South Shore communities' MCAS presentations, and there are a number of schools, especially at the high school level, that saw a dramatic drop off of scores. And I think it's just a testament to how great our kids are, and kudos to our families, too, and our teachers for raising such great kids who try their best. And I don't think the graduation requirement made them miss a beat about giving the MCAS their best last year, and I think that's not something that can be said at every high school across the state. And so we're really lucky to have kids that try their best no matter whether it counts or not, and it, and to them, it does count. And I think it's good practice for SATs and for future tests, and our kids, they want to, they want to do the best they can, and they don't just rush through things and blow it off. So, good job.
She was talking.
Oh, yeah, that was Gerard's course, probably, last year, the junior.
All right, let's move on to FY '27 budget discussion. What have we?
So we have a few slides that Lisa created to respond to some of the questions that we received, and we will add these to the packet tomorrow, but this, we've been getting questions along the way, and so we've, we tried to put in writing some of the things that have come up. But we can go through this quickly and then just open it up to your deliberation and questions.
Okay. So the, so we received, Kathy, who's not here this evening, provided a few questions that we are going to touch on first, and the first one, I'm actually going to turn over to BJ after I read the question. I'd like to, I'd like some additional detail on why we are proposing a full program review. I thought we already did that and implemented new communication strategies last year. So BJ's going to speak to that.
Sure. So the program evaluation requirement is a requirement annually. It's not a full program evaluation. We're supposed to be looking at whatever area is selected by myself with the help of CPAC. And so what we're doing is, we're continuing on with the evaluation area that Teresa Skinner had requested, which was the area of the transition program. We're looking at the services that are being provided. How are they being provided? How are they being recommended? We have parents who ask this, how is an IEP developed? How are those decisions made? And so what we wanted to look at is the programs that we're offering. We want to look at the students who have not been successful within the district and needed to go into an out-of-district placement, and analyze and see, are there changes that can be made? So really, the focal point here was the, the program evaluation component in the budget narrative was more of a general, that's where a lot of, any changes that are going to come as far as budgetary recommendations, changes in curriculum, changes in not only staffing, but how staffing would be best used. A lot of that information and decisions come from the program evaluations that are completed. In talking to the building principals and central administration, the continued use of, the continued looking at the transition program seems to be the, an area for us to focus on and see, what can we do differently? Should we do anything differently? That's going to impact a lot, as I mentioned, the material, how we're providing specifically designed instruction, different methodologies. And then that's also going to be impacting the procedures that we use and the professional development that we provide. So for example, if we're deciding to move toward a slightly different model, or a slightly different curriculum, or in many situations, it could be an assessment that we're doing differently or we're doing throughout the district, then that's going to require some time for our staffing to get that training and making sure that we're aligned so that we're using that data not only for diagnostic purposes, but that we're using it for progress monitoring as well. So the program evaluation has to happen every year. It can be small, it can be large. I did reach out to Teresa Skinner for the program evaluation that was done last year. I don't have access to that, and I haven't received that, but once I do, I can give you a summary on what that was and what the recommendations were, and how those recommendations were followed from last year to this year's budget.
Okay. Moving on to the next question. Next slide. Oh. Okay, so the next question was, why the large increase in contracted services? Is this the known, unknown number you need to build a buffer for? Some detail on this would be helpful. I think the next slide will put this in better context, so.
Can we turn to the slide while you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the answer is no, it's not a buffer. It is based on our three-year historical trend average that we do, what we currently have budgeted for '26, and then we take all of that actual activity into consideration for a recommendation for FY '27. If you look at the slightly shaded columns, the three-year average and the FY '27 recommended budget are pretty, pretty similar. The reason that we did not make a recommendation for a larger amount on the medical therapy contracted services is because I think FY '24 was an outlier, based on what we're seeing with that data. And we also have a new special education director, so I do anticipate over the next year that things will likely smooth out on that. All right.
Wait, the psychological contracted services, is that with Care Solace, or is that separate?
No, that's separate.
It's under the sped department, and, okay.
Care Solace is $10,000.
And that's.
That's not part of the psychological contracted services.
No, that falls, so for us, that falls under the guidance department.
Got it.
Yep, and the district psychological contracted services could either be direct services
or in many situations, it's assessments. So there might be assessments that the IEP team, or we have been asked to conduct something that we don't have a specialty in, or we don't have that staff member. That's, usually it's in assessment, not in direct services for that.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. The next question was, I thought we received good funding from the state that we would be able to apply for FY '27, and this was regarding circuit breaker. So that is correct. We did budget just over $1.25 million of funding for FY '27 in the budget, and that's $148,000 over what we budgeted for FY '26. We typically operate a year in arrears for circuit breaker and for our special, the majority of our special education grants, the IDEA 240 and 262 grants. And that's just good prudent fiscal management so that we know that we have those funds available to spend, and that we're not making a projection on revenue that we may or may not receive. I have been in a district where we, we're using our current year's circuit breaker money to fund our special education costs in that year, and that is really difficult to do. You, you have an assumption of what you know what that's going to be. Your budget is already built, and so it's just a big challenge to do that. Doing it the way that we do here is just better financial management. We know what we have, and we utilize that towards budgeting purposes. Okay? And then the next item. At Fiscal Advisory last week, I had mentioned that we are working, are working to identify $300,000 to assist in funding the feasibility study for the Alden School. So I just wanted to share some information on that with the larger group as well, aside from Kathy's question. So we are looking at, utilizing the building use revolving account for this. The fund is legally restricted, so we can't use the revolving account for regular operational expenditures, but we can use it for maintenance, like, building and grounds activity. The feasibility is a qualified expense, is our emergency repairs. Last year, we used the, this account specifically, we had a town meeting, we were notified that the Chandler water heater went. And so that expense, being emergency repair, came out of this account. So we work towards maximizing our restricted funds for facilities and preserving our unrestricted general fund dollars for mandatory operations.
So looking at the revolving account for the feasibility study, that, that doesn't cover the whole feasibility study?
No. So the feasibility study that we put forward is $1.75 million.
Right.
And that was based on basically the average of what is seen in the market for elementary school project, feasibility study, study projects currently.
Yeah.
And so we understand that it's an expensive ask, and we were trying to find a way to be able to contribute towards it. So lessen the amount that the town needs to come up with, or the town would be asked to come up with. And so that would obviously reduce the total ask. It's not how, assuming that it was supported and it would move forward. The $300,000 would be, that keeps going out on me, I'm sorry. The $300,000 would be listed as an additional funding source on that line item. Thank you.
Okay. Has the, has a decision been made on the feasibility study being a debt exclusion?
No. We met with the Fiscal Advisory Committee last week just to review our capital request and our prioritize list. And I know the town is working really hard to look at all of the capital requests that have come in across departments to see if anything for any of us can be pushed to FY ' '28 or beyond. And so when we went before Fiscal Advisory last week, we were trying to be creative to do whatever we could to kind of stretch, to be able to pull, put that cost down as much as possible, because we, although it might end up being a debt exclusion, it hasn't been, nothing has been decided yet for sure, because there's so many capital requests that they're still working with, department heads, to see if there's any flexibility and what can be prioritized in total. So I don't know, I don't think we found out last week at Fiscal Advisory when they would have final recommendations. But I know that we appreciate the work on behalf that Mary McKinnon and Rainey are doing with the Fiscal Advisory to try to get the most emergent capital projects moved forward, knowing that this one is, it's costly and it's time-sensitive with the eligibility fees.
Right, right. Because we go back to square one if we can.
Right. We don't have the ability because of that MSBA timeline where it's a 270-day, and we are already asking MSBA for a 30-day extension, which they, I have to put a letter together. We had our enrollment meeting for that earlier this week. And so this isn't the kind of thing where we could, we could delay the eligibility period. It's strict, and it just, it cuts off and it runs out, so.
Yeah, okay.
So we'd have to start over.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing Alex Chin said was, free cash hasn't been certified yet, so they don't even know how much.
Yeah.
You know, they think, oh, it could be 2 million, or it could be 3 million. So they need that number as well.
On the next slide, at the last meeting, so this is specifically to address the town, the schools portion of the budget, excuse me, the schools portion of the town budget as a whole, and what was presented as 45.28% of the budget, which was also shared with the Town Finance Director at their Select Board meeting in October, versus the 60% amount that we hear as well. So at, at the November 5th meeting, I shared the school department's budget is predicted to be 45.28% of the town's budget, as Ms. McKinnon also shared. This is based on our direct operating budget, which is the money that you, the school committee directly controls for the teachers' textbooks, textbooks and operational costs of the district. The 60% figure that you often hear about is the total cost of education, which includes things that the town pays for that are legally required and reported to the state. These type of expenses are employee and retiree health insurance, non-professional staff retirement, non-capital building and grounds maintenance, principal and interest debt payments, worker compensation, property and liability insurance, and things of that nature. The difference between the 45% direct budget cost and the 60% total cost of education perception is primarily made up of these expenses that are required by state law, which are components of Chapter 70 and Mass. General Law, but appropriated and paid by the municipal side. These are included in that 60% figure, as the state requires us to allocate, and include them as part of our end-of-year report, reporting. And the, and those numbers are used as a component of net, net school spending, which I'll speak about in a moment. This is considered a cost incurred by the school, so we count it as part of the total town investment in education, which we shared, the, one of the slides that we shared last, last meeting was the percentage above the net school spending requirement and, for Duxbury and for our DARTs. And then I think the other component that we shared was the same information, what is the education portion of the budget that's reported to the Department of Revenue on the Schedule A, that's called out as education, and that, we showed that to show just where we fit with the other districts, not saying that we're not funded well, or that we're being underfunded, or we're looking for additional funding. We're just using that as, as a data point in comparison to our comparable districts. So I, so the agreement that, there's an, there's a, I don't know if you guys are familiar, I'm going to assume that you probably are, you should be. There is a town-school municipal agreement that's in place. It's a services agreement, and it basically outlines what these items, right? What, what does the town cover? And then what percentage of that are they going to provide as information for us to then add on the end-of-year report at the end of the year for the school portion of that? Our agreement that we currently have has been in place since 2019, and if there was discussion around changing it, Desi would have to approve it. So just want to share that.
There's any reason to.
Yeah. And so I, so this particular slide is just a little snippet from one page of the end-of-year report, a very small snippet, to just show how that information feeds into the larger report. So you see on the left-hand side, there's school committee-controlled items. On the next column, there is city or town, and then, I can't, you can kind of ignore the next one, and then it just gives you a total. And then on line 15 is our net school spending based on the data that was provided. And then it also shows what our required net school spending was. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you.
I think this last slide just reiterates what you were just saying.
Yep, the last, I already, yep, I'm sorry.
I think we just wanted to make it really clear tonight that we weren't sharing that information about our comparable districts to do anything but show that we were in, within a reasonable range of our DART districts, and we weren't suggesting, I don't want that to be misconstrued, that we were saying we should be receiving a higher portion, but I think sometimes when you don't have direct data and comparisons as a visual, you don't know if a town is way out of whack in terms of, in terms of how much they're spending on the Education Department, because I think we hear a lot in this community that each of our departments are having to make some really hard choices about staffing that have been heartbreaking to hear for the last two years. And so we really wanted to take a look to see, are we completely out of line, or are we within a reasonable range of our comparable districts, ensuring that we aren't requesting budgets that are just in outer space compared to where we should be? And I think what we were trying to show is that we are prudent with our budget planning, and we're, we really try to be considerate of making consolidations and reductions wherever we possibly can. And I think sometimes the question in the community may be, if the enrollment has declined as much as it has over the last 10 years, why aren't we seeing more cost savings? Which I think it's really hard to understand, because you see, we have fewer students than we did a few years back, but we continue to have rising costs, and I think that can be frustrating. And I think the cost of education, like everything else, has been rising exponentially, and so you'll never see a direct correlation with declining enrollment costs are suddenly going down. Same thing with building projects. When we talk about the Alden School building project, when, when you built the middle school and high school, that total cost of that beautiful building was, probably seemed incredibly high at the time, out of like, the realm of what you could have ever imagined. And now that, the cost of high schools and middle schools of that nature have almost, it seems like they've doubled. And so nothing is getting cheaper. It just continues between all of the different inflationary expenses and just cost of living and education in general, costs go up. And so we do really try to be mindful. We said it last year during a lot of the budget forums, that every, we know that everything we ask you to consider before you make your final budget recommendation has a direct impact on what other departments have for hard on what other departments have for hard decisions that they have to make in spending. And that goes from capital requests, because we have a lot of capital requests. Our, we could, we could spend weeks talking about things that we'd like to repair. And I think every other department in town needs, they need machinery, they need vehicles, there's costly repairs that are waiting to be completed in town. And so, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're not asking for the sun, moon and stars and that we really try to just ask for what is absolutely needed, given the budget constraints that the community faces.
And I think Katie Sinclair does a good job of advocating or explaining that. And yeah, I mean, her needs are endless.
Yeah. And then, last week, we talked a lot about the roof units at Chandler School and our, our lack of ability to do preventative maintenance on some of our systems. And I think the fact that some of those were original to the Chandler School building, as much as we don't have the funding, and I know Betsy has talked about that a lot over the past five years of we have, if we're investing in our buildings, we need to take care of them and in all of the systems. But I think that everyone does as much as you can, as much as they can, given the limitations. And so, we take good care of our buildings as much as we can with the limited staff and funds that we have to do that preventative maintenance. So, that was, these were just some answers to questions that came up. I think there were a couple of additional questions that Jen, that you had shared that we had hoped to be able to provide prior to the December 10th meeting. So, our goal was really to make sure the packet was completed on the Friday before the December 10th meeting. So, if, we'll do the best we can to get any of the additional questions that come up tonight that we may not be prepared for or to answer the questions that Jen, and I don't know if you want to just give a general overview of some of the things that you had asked that we'd like to be able to provide in that packet ahead of time.
Yeah, yep. So, I think that I was, I had a couple of different things and some of them were addressed tonight with the MCAS results, but the majority of my questions were around the special ed part of the budget. And I was particularly interested in, and I was going to read my email here, a few metrics regarding special ed in district services that mirror some of the provided data for all students would do a lot to inform deliberations from my perspective. And actually, this, this was, I think this ask was mirrored tonight by a lot of the comments around the need for ensuring we have an effective co-teaching model, we're staffed with the caseloads, et cetera. So, the data, the data points that I was hoping to hear, and, and I used some of the dashboards, actually, that were in the MCAS deck to do analysis myself, but I would love to hear it from, from BJ. So, one is, and I don't know if this is an appropriate metric, but similar to per pupil spending, right? What are the, what is the spend per enrolled student with disability? Okay? And that could be, you could, I mean, there's, I can share how I calculated it, but you know, that's, that's one question I had, particularly in comparison to DARTs, to see how is Duxbury, I think that could be a helpful sort of benchmark. The second thing is, what we talked about tonight was MCAS results. We talked a lot about high-needs students. The vast majority of those are students with disabilities, right? From a, from a numbers perspective. So, you know, 17 to 19% of population is students with disabilities and then the other smaller demographics, then we're getting up to 23% for the high-needs. So, you know, like what are, what are the outcomes that we're getting? And again, student, we know that there's, you know, there's not going to be necessarily, you know, there's lots of different contexts there with regard, that explain the sort of discrepancies between the general population and high-needs students. The third thing that I think would be helpful, and again, this came up tonight, is caseloads of special ed teachers and special ed paras and contracted services. So, we're asking for more money for contracted services, but we don't have a sense of like, you know, do we have, and there's dashboards that show the caseloads. Like I pulled caseloads per 100, for sped teachers, per 100 students of disabilities and for paras with students with disabilities. And that could give us a rough proxy of like, even if, compared with others, right? Like if, if the numbers are correct, you know, we actually, we have a lot of, a lot of caseloads on paras compared to other districts, right? Which shows, you know, so anyway, you know, we'd love to hear your, your thoughts on this. And then, lastly, just sort of enrollment by disability. I know that, that you had mentioned in the, at the last meeting, something around sort of evaluating the programs that we have for autistic kids, so sort of understanding that. So, all of the things I listed, sped expenditures per enrolled student with disabilities, so in district services, right? MCAS results of those stat population, caseloads of sped teachers and paras and related services if we have them, and then enrollment by disability. All of those things are actually in public dashboards, but I know that, again, there might be different, there might be limitations, different data, et cetera. But I think those data points would help flesh out sort of like, to the program evaluation point, right? Like I've never seen a program evaluation. It sounds like you have, you've asked Teresa and stuff either. Like, it's very difficult for me as someone who, obviously you can tell, really enjoy is getting into the details. But I think we have a lot of this great data on the general population, but for 20% of our kids-ish and 20% of our budget, I mean, again, some of those are, you know, many outer district, whatever, we don't have that data. Or we have it in dashboards, but it's, we just haven't talked about it. And so, that's a very wordy response. So, for our next steps, like I also don't want to put a, you know, a bunch of asks on your plate. Like I was talking to Lisa, I'm happy to share like what I did, again, caveats, like, but I'm using the same dashboards that are linked in our thing. So, like if those, if that data's not right, then like, then there's another, you know. And I also know that we have like tech, you know, we have like tech resource constraints, right? Where like, so there's like lots of things here.
Sure.
Anyway, so that's, that was my request and I feel like that is a very critical input for budget decision-making.
That sounds like a very appropriate ask. We can collect all of that data. The one piece that I would ask a little bit more is the paraprofessional caseload.
Yep.
I've not heard that term before.
Yep.
So, if you could show me what data you're pulling to obtain that?
Sure.
So, there's, the two sources of data that you cited, one is the MCAS data.
Yep.
That's the public data. A lot of that's going to be very accurate. What the, we started off this meeting talking about what is the definition of a high-needs individual?
Yep.
And so, just one additional piece, it is students with disabilities. That is not students who are on a 504.
Okay.
It's only students who are on an IEP. And so, collecting that data and looking at that data can be helpful. I would rather pull the straight data for just students with disabilities.
Yep.
There's a lot of comparative data. So, I feel like I can provide that to you by our next meeting and go over that data.
Yeah.
It's just that para-piece is a little bit, I'm not quite sure what you're looking at for that.
Yep.
Because I've never even considered that in that frame before. So, I'd love to be able to talk to you about that as well.
Well, so, just one quick, sorry to interrupt, but my assumption here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the paras often do a lot of the IEP implementation in certain ways, right? Depending on the accommodations or whatever, right? So, I think that's the lens that could be taken is in terms of it's not just, and this also gets to kind of what, what all the curriculum supervisors were talking about with regard to, you know, what is the right sort of like constellation of resources depending on the kids' needs, et cetera? And so, there's obviously not like a crystal ball, but if we have some different ways of looking at it, it at least helps me understand, okay, now I understand that, you know, we are on the same page with regard to what does it look like to make sure that we have, that we're staffed appropriately.
Absolutely.
But particularly from a special ed perspective.
Yeah. So, the, the MCAS data is a, is a good data from everything that I see. That's the data that I use. The other data that you mentioned was the radar data.
Yeah.
So, there is a general ed side and a special ed side to radar. Anybody can Google radar, special education Massachusetts, DESI, and you're going to come right to the page. It used to be an Excel file that you downloaded and you had to do all the things.
They still have that too.
Now, it's an online platform that you can go in and you can set those DART districts, which is very helpful. It would be very helpful. There is a lot of data that was submitted that in the past that was not submitted correctly or was submitted with a coding difference that made it appear to be one-way when it wasn't.
Yep.
So, the clearest example is when I interviewed for Duxbury, I looked at that radar data too. So, what is going on? What is that enrollment disability percentage? Is there anything that seems a little high, seems a little low? And some of the data was that the students diagnosed with autism was substantially lower than all of the DART districts compared to Duxbury.
Yep.
So, that was one question I had. But even from the very first glance, you look at that and it says the students with disabilities. I see that in 2023, the radar data says that we had 296 and then that jumped up to 450, which is a more appropriate number.
Yep.
The next year. So, in investigating that with a data specialist and the platform that we use, we know that two years ago, there was a setting that was inadvertently selected. They fixed it, but that data is still erroneous.
Yep.
So, if we're looking at trendline data in the radar, I would not recommend looking at that. But what I, there's two things that I'm tasking. One is getting you the data internal that I have, that I'm making decisions off of. And the second is doing everything that is in our power to correct that radar data, at least now moving forward. So, spending a good time with the data specialist on the FTE, the FTE numbers for our special education staff on the radar data is incorrect. Identifying areas where the contracted service providers previously would never entered in our system. And so, I came in, I saw that that wasn't being done and so, I had a meeting and said, how do we get this in? What data do you need from me to get this, these staff members? So, we had 20 contracted service providers and only two of them were in our Aspen portal. So, now we're well on our way to getting all 20 of those in so that those ratios will be appropriate. There's not a whole lot that I can do about the back information. I have reached out to radar staff to see, is there a possibility for us to resubmit something so that we actually do have that trendline data? Because the tool would be fantastic.
Yep.
If the numbers were correct.
Yep.
So, that's what I'm working on right now is the radar data, our internal data. So, as of right now, I wouldn't have a lot of faith in the value that's in radar, but I really want to clean that up for you. And then, we can present on the December 10th school committee meeting, more of that special education, students with disabilities breakdown compared to students who are not on an IEP. And then, comparing that to the state and then identifying the largest academic gaps that were, were already identified. So, I'm happy to put that together and then also provide some recommendations moving forward that I would have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the, I think the only two things that, they're not necessarily questions, just more like comments. So, one, I don't think we have to, I don't have to continue to beat the drum of the special education data. It's been a rich conversation tonight, but I think that it is going to be really important to the public at large to just have a better understanding of that important fifth of the budget that we have for special education. It sounds like you're, you're working on it and the more that you can just sort of keep this committee abreast of what you're finding and what's erroneous and what you're working on to make it not erroneous is going to be really, really appreciated and really, really important. The other comment I have, just goes back to the, to the comment I made in the last school committee meeting, is just really around the, the staffing issue. And so, I know you've got a real difficult needle to thread. You've got to put together a budget that is lean but reasonable and takes into account the other departments. And I don't want to get into like a huge debate about it, but that's not in my policy. My policy isn't to make budget decisions that are based on like what the DPW is getting or not. I understand I'm a, a community member and I'm, you know, a resident here, so I sort of think in those terms and that way. But I've really got to make sure that, that, you know, my decisions are focused on, you know, the achievement of the students at this, in this district. So, I, I will continue to, to, I think, really press on what you feel is going to be, you know, sort of realistic in terms of the staff, the staff that we, that we need. It's, it's discouraging to hear from those three, you know? And, you know, it's, I think it's great, you know, the support that you give them is awesome. The words that you said at the end of their presentation, Dr. Wilcox, was, you know, right on and really appreciated and that it doesn't change the fact that those departments are diluted and they are sort of pressed with having to try to do more with, with, with less. And that's, that just continues to be a concern. I can't get it out of my mind. So, that's going to be, I think that's going to affect, you know, how I think about things on the 10th.
I agree with that. And I think, you know, well, I think a lot of things, but I think a level service is a cut, basically. And we've seen it. So, you've got three people doing the work of six people and I think there will be a lag and the schools are going to suffer and the picture might not be as rosy if we can't fund the schools the way we need to. It's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
So, it's good hearing from the people in the trenches. And yeah, we have amazing teachers and, and yeah, everybody's working the best they can. And the interventions have been incredible for the students, but at some point, the dam's going to break.
So, I would encourage, I mean, this is the last meeting that we have.
Yep.
The, the last official meeting that we have before the 10th, but we do have another budget forum. I think it's on December 3rd and we had, it's like the oldest joke I always used to make because I present a lot, you know? Like when I don't think anyone's going to show up to a meeting, I always say, oh, thank you both for coming?
Yes.
That was exactly what happened in the last, thank you both for coming.
Yes.
We had two people.
Yes, we did.
So, I'm really hopeful that, that, you know, we, we get some good, you know, good, good representative sample of community members who are, have questions and concerns and thoughts and input and feedback about the budget. This is the time, so I would invite everyone who has the time, but December 3rd at 7:00 PM to, you know, come in and, and make their voices heard as it relates to the budget. It's going to be very helpful for me and I'm sure the other committee members.
Yeah. And that's coming up and that'll be at the library.
So, how, for the December 10th meeting, I don't remember how you guys did this, well, I know it was a little bit wonky last year, but like how, we're going to vote by cost center, right? Is that how we're doing it? I can't remember the logistics of actually voting.
That is how we did it last year.
Okay. And remind me, I know that, you know, we have the, you know, Dr. Klingman's recommended budget and then there's the level services budget, correct? Or do we not do that?
We, we presented that because that is what will, we are going to be developing a 5A and a 5B budget as a community. And so, we wanted to depict for school committee what the 3% budget would look like, but we also, we were also asked by all of you to present our recommended budget.
Right.
So, you have both of those and so, I believe you're going to be, you're going to be voting on the cost center based on your recommended budget, which will then be considered for, when they're developing the 5B budget.
Correct.
And when we vote by cost center, just to, just to give you guys sort of my understanding, I would recommend that we, when we actually, that sort of the mechanics of the vote, I think should be, we're voting on, you know, here's the, the bottom line budget that we're voting on and then we basically say, and that is made up of cost center A, cost center B, cost center C. And we can hold and say that, you know, we disagree. But I think it was a little confusing last time when we, we really didn't sort of vote on the holistic budget. We voted on this sort of set of, of cost centers. And I think that mechanically, we can vote on the overall budget and then in the, in the narrative, say that the, in the motion, we make all the, the cost centers plain because then if someone doesn't agree with it, they can just say, they can make a motion to change a cost center.
Amend a cost center.
Amend, amend, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, amend, amend the motion on the line item.
On the line, on the cost center.
So, that would, that's how I recommend we do it.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Well, that would assume you understand, yeah. I mean, I think the, the purpose of the cost centers is that, or my understanding and the reason that I felt like it was important last year to have them is again, that is how Lisa then is to report to us. Money cannot be moved from one cost center to another without approval. So, if we haven't identified any cost centers and we just vote on one number, it doesn't give her any guidance nor does it give any sort of fiscal management to us. So, to that point, I think it doesn't, how we vote them, I guess it doesn't really matter whether you individually.
Well, it was just confusing because I remember we, when, because when we had our first, as you said, it was wonky. We had, we ended up having two votes, but when we had that first vote, I was the one dissenter. And so, we were voting on every cost center and I had to say nay on a particular cost center and some of the members were like, oh no, I, I'm sorry, I said yay. I said yes on some of the cost centers because.
But no on the front.
And some of the members were like, well, why, you just said that you weren't going to vote for this. And so, I just think that for the public and for us to sort of understand, we still should be isolating the cost centers, but that should be in the narrative of the whole motion. So, in other words, like let's say 45 million dollars. So, vote to approve 45 million dollars made up of cost center A, which is this amount, cost center B, which is this amount, cost center C, which is this amount, blah, 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 right? And then, we can, if we want, then we can amend or we can make an amendment to the motion if we don't agree with a particular cost center.
With the individual cost centers and each amendment would then have to be, yeah. And each amendment would then have to be, yeah.
No, no.
I worry it would complicate the other way.
I don't think so. Because you're still, basically what you're doing is you're still amending the motion. You're, you know, you're saying like, I, I want to amend this motion because I don't want to spend this money. Why don't you want to spend this money? I have a problem in this cost center. So then we deliberate on that cost center.
Okay.
And we may not, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, assuming hopefully that doesn't happen on each cost center more than once and with more than one member. Because I think then it will, you will have amendments that will have to be resolved and then you amend again. But it's fine. Hopefully, obviously, hopefully it does not get to that point.
Yeah.
I guess my only, and again, that, that assumes that you understand what part of the cost center you're not comfortable with. So I just, I, I think we need to make sure that everyone has the information they would need about where the recommendations around additions are going to fall, which I think you've done in some of the exhibits. But that's going to be critically important to understand which cost center you would choose to amend.
Well, that would be either way, right?
What?
That would be either way. You've got to know what cost center you're not comfortable with, right?
Which bucket it fits into.
Yeah.
Well, can we have the budget presented in such a way where the cost center, you know, 100, that you put next to it, what that is? This is this, this is that.
In terms of the cost center, sorry.
The cost center with its name or the cost center with its name with showing the adjustment of a dollar amount, whatever the dollar amount, and the items that are in it? What exactly, is that, is that what you're looking for?
I'd say all of it. What do you think?
Maybe this is annoying because it's late, but like it would be helpful. So what, when we, okay, so when we look, like what are, I'd be curious, it's like, what are we going to be looking at to say like, okay, this cost center, this whatever? Like just being really detailed, like what exactly?
Well, that's, we need more detail. Because last year it was, okay, cost center 100, cost center 200, and we just voted by cost center. And it was the dollar, it was the cost center and the dollar amount.
I, I felt personally like I had enough information in each of those verticals to understand what was in that cost center. I can't remember it off the top of my head. I don't have last year's budget in front of me. But we, we intentionally voted on every cost center.
Correct.
Last year. So I knew what was in every cost center. I wasn't able to vote on it. So there were a few cost centers that I voted yes, because I agreed with those cost centers. And then there were a few outlying cost centers that I voted no, which represented the ones that didn't make up the austerity budget that we ended up voting.
So like these things?
Yeah.
Okay.
One through five, right. So any staffing fits into curriculum and instruction.
Okay.
I think that if there's recommended, if someone makes a motion to change one of the recommended amounts in the, in that cost center, I think we might just have to caucus for a moment so that Lisa can provide the, take a pause, so that Lisa can provide the cost that you'd be adjusting.
Yeah.
Because it's really not ideal to have your Director of Business and Finance doing calculations at the table. But I think if we plan ahead to say that if there are going to be recommended changes, that we just take a moment, stop the meeting, let Lisa do what she needs to do and then come back with information that you may need.
Yep.
Is that fair?
That's fair. Yeah. Thank you. Because we all used to just have our calculators out. Be like, where are we at now?
Well, I think sometimes in the live meeting on the spot, Lisa has been asked to make calculations and provide information. And that is not best practice. But if that comes up at the next meeting, we can just take a recess for a few minutes until, until we're comfortable to be able to share any questions or exact numbers that you may have.
Yeah. I mean, there's a dollar value to each of these things. Well, I mean, this, no, no, I'm saying the superintendent recommendations, the list of things that we will, would like to add above and beyond level service, they all have a dollar value. So just denoting which cost center. You don't even maybe have to get into the specific dollar value of each thing, because I think that can be dicey also and is not quite frankly, our responsibility. It's a matter of which cost center doesn't fit in so that we can determine which cost center we are not comfortable with. And articulate why and how. And I don't think the number could necessarily be resolved in that moment, which is challenging.
Yeah, we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it, yeah.
Right. Can I just ask a question about this specific? And I know I asked this last time and Tony did. I think at some point in some folder, there is like every job description in the history of the universe, which is fine, but it's not super easy to find anything in there when we're looking at these positions. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. The Instructional Technology Director is the Director of Instructional Technology Job Description. That's a Word document that we have access to on the drive. I guess what I'm saying is if we could have the job descriptions for the specific positions that you have recommended we add in the folder with the budget materials rather than having to search for them, that would be helpful. So that I don't, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right things. And I couldn't find the DMS Math Specialist job description, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't be different than the elementary math specialist, but go ahead, Doug.
No, I was just going to say that, I think we've said this before, but last year I just want to reiterate that we said that we were adequately funded and now we're not. Just as a general overview. And that the proposed budget will make small moves to mitigate the losses that we had as a result of last year. So some of those positions that are recommendations are not like a one for one. We didn't lose a position and now we're looking to add it back. We definitely had conversations and discussions and looked at data to say, what do we need and how do we mitigate this? So for example, specific to the math specialist at the middle school level, I would say we looked at the implementation of the math program and the need for additional support, the effectiveness of the tutors and how we have two tutors only during a portion of the day. So what are the efficient and proactive moves that we can make to mitigate the losses that we have and to fill the needs that we have based on data and based on the information that we're receiving from our administrators? So there, there, there is a job description for a math specialist at the elementary level, but that may not be the same roles and responsibilities. And that role isn't there and wasn't there. The reason why it's there is because we're trying to mitigate losses of a curriculum supervisor position without then saying, we lost one, we, we need another one. So that's just something to keep in mind is that we didn't just say, well, we, we would like to reinstate all of these positions that we lost. But there are job descriptions for others, but maybe not for some. It's not because we're trying to add something new as a growth and investment budget. It's because we're trying to mitigate carefully and using data, acknowledging that we can't just propose replacing all of the positions that were lost.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I mean, I think, I guess what you're saying right now is an important narrative that I don't know that we have discussed much. You know, you did the initial presentation. I think articulating that in some way, whether it's a memo, that then also includes the job description to say, and here is why this person is necessary. That's great, that's fine. But I think anytime, I know we're adding this to mitigate losses elsewhere, but it's still a new position for the district.
Yeah, and it's still, it's also creating an efficiency with adjusting, it's, it's not a new position either because we're also trading the math tutors for the portion of that math specialist position. And so we were also being creative with not adding, keeping math tutors and having a math specialist. It's reconfiguring how support is administered at the middle school so that we have someone all day long that's available to assist in the classrooms the way our math specialists and the reading specialists do at the elementary. But we can certainly take the job description. I don't think it will be a far change from our elementary. We can update it so it includes the, the different tasks that we may be asking for ASP for a middle, a middle school math specialist that we don't have at the elementary level. So we can include, I don't know that there's other new positions that are in our recommendations besides the middle school math specialist, but we'll make sure for whatever is listed there that, that you have easy access to the job descriptions. And I can also take that job description folder and put it in this year's School Committee Google Drive so that you're not searching back from previous years of where you stored it.
Yeah. I mean, you can just search the drive. My point is just that these positions are the specific positions we are asking for. And I know two of them, three of them, I think they exist already or did. We just didn't refill them, right?
Yeah, so the Director of Instructional Technology position job description would not be changed considerably, although that's something that, when you're looking at technology, there's, I don't know how heavy that is on AI. So we can always, I mean, there's going to be some changes that are naturally occurring based on the year it is and what, what is currently happening. But we'll take a look to make sure you have those. And if adjustments need to be made, we can make those.
Yeah, I just, I mean, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just, if we are voting to support a recommendation to hire a position, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear in that it's clear to the public and anyone else who wants to know about what it is we're hiring, right? And I think, quite frankly, that will justify why we're asking for it. So I think it would just be important as like supplemental material.
I forgot to bring this up earlier, so the last point I'll make, I promise. So there was some discussion in one of the other meetings, I think it was a Finance Committee meeting like a week and a half ago, that the first budget presentation that you gave in our last meeting, people couldn't see the screen and they couldn't sort of, I don't know, they just couldn't sort of appreciate or ingest everything that was there. And I just want to remind everyone in the public that this school district and this school committee is laser focused on making sure that all of our budget materials, all of our materials in any meeting are available online at least 48 hours before all of our meetings. I can't say that about every other committee in this town. So I don't know if you want to go onto the website and pull it up so that they can see it on YouTube, but we, how many, roughly, how many pages is our budget book this year? Roughly?
The budget book is 125-ish pages somewhere in that family.
Okay, so we have 125-page budget material, pages of budget material. We're not going to bring 125 pages times 50 and pass them out in a meeting. But we do have them available before every meeting because that's the law. So anyone wants to follow along with a budget or, you know, do their research before a school committee meeting based on what they find online and then make public comment, they're more than welcome to do that. We want that. We invite that. That helps to inform our thinking. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that all of this material exists and it exists before we have our public meetings.
Can I add to that as well? So in addition to putting it all in the packet on the School Committee page on the DPS website, the day after the meeting, I also post the budget materials on the budget page of the business office page, website as well. So it is in two places. But it, but mine goes up the day after. The full packet goes up 48 hours before.
And I think after the meeting, we had, I spoke to Mike Woodford, because I know when we had the joint select, it wasn't a joint, the Select Board meeting in this room back in early September, that screen, I don't even know if it's out in that room right now. It was moved out because that screen was somehow hooked up. It's very old. But Mike and I talked about getting a second screen for out there so that people in the audience can see numbers. It's really hard, it's hard to see at this table. So we're trying to find ways for the audience to be able to see presentations a little bit easier. If we can take an existing screen that we have somewhere else in the district and post it in that room. We're working on that too, to try to simulcast both screens at the same time. So we're working on that as well.
Do we link to where the packets are on the YouTube page? That would be a really easy way to be like, because it's like.
Here's the meeting, here's the packet.
Well, yeah, even just in general, the standing link to like DPS, School Committee.
I think that if you go to the School Committee website, you're, you're able to click on the video and the packet right next to each other. I think in that chart right now. Does that chart have like video?
The packet link was wonky after last meeting and I think it got fixed.
Okay.
It wasn't the right. It was like the October 22nd meeting was in the November 5th packet link.
I think that we were alerted to that and we fixed it as soon as someone told us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't notice because obviously that's not where I accessed it.
We'll need to also update tonight's packet because I provided you a memo from Sarah McGuire and that wasn't.
I was just going to highlight that, yeah.
And I wasn't in the, that wasn't in the original packet, so that will be included. But Sarah wanted to respond to the question specifically that Laurel asked about, is there, is there a fix for some of the course selection issues that we face?
No.
We've talked to Ms. Cotton-Herman and Ms. McGuire about that at length. And there's not a simple answer because it's been the chipping away of point two here, point four here, point three there, and the fact that we share middle school and high school staff, we're unique in that way. That we, we don't necessarily, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to restore all the staff that we had because that would bring us back to having class size that's lower in some cases than we are able to operate with right now. So Sarah wanted to make sure that you had an explanation to answer that question from last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate. But I, I mean, the justice will be public, right? It's not right now.
We're going to put that in the package tomorrow.
I just, I think there's a lot of families at DMS who are asking this question because they're having this experience. And so I, I think this is important for people to understand that what we are recommending is not going to solve that problem.
And here's why.
And that's going to, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like we can add.
People are not going to be happy about that.
The fact that we have some large PE classes, it's not, we can't add one PE teacher. It's because of the compression of all of the electives at the middle school that resulted in that.
Right.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.